It is five thirty-one, I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop reporter. Our first item of business is budget legions. Would you like to make or would you like to meet? Okay. All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Four of us are here in the room. Selectman Yaglov is with us online. Uh, our first presenter of the evening will be the Frederick Library. Mr. Anderson.
For yours. In cooperation with budget, we're requesting the same amount as we did last year. And I can't read this without glasses. I think we all have the breakdown of what our budget is. Well, we are gonna be doing pretty much what we did last. Here we have some items coming up in the future. Keep in mind, we operate on a calendar year. So. We're doing has been slightly different, so. And when it comes to the second half of your fiscal year, that's not really in our budget. But it's gonna be pretty much, we pretty much do the same thing all the time. That's what we write it though. So I don't know, uh, you know, all our. Income and expenses we shared, but you have no idea what you have.
We have the same document, you know, isn't it?
Okay.
I'm reading through your, your page correctly, but it looks like the same thing.
I'm, I'm willing to complete right now?
Oh, maybe not that.
Or the budget, the budget, yes. Oh, okay. That was provided, I don't know what happens with it.
And then we've got your, your cover letter attached as well.
Oh, I have one.
Day of December twenty-three, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that's, that's your modern waiver request.
That is already dealt with. Yeah, that's why you had me confused. If I wrote you a little letter, it's okay.
So, uh, full disclosure, um, you asked for a status quo budget. I did increase it by two percent just to kind of keep up with everything else. Because what the thought process was, first of all, you guys are doing good work. And secondly, if, uh, if we were not to, we would just be creating that same. Distance between services, i- it just didn't make sense to, to keep you flat. Um, when everything else was going on and it was the minimum amount.
We'll accept it.
There you go.
Okay. No confusion, that's fine.
Jason, would you be willing to put the spreadsheet up again that you did last meeting? Thank you.
Make sure I'm operating on the right one. That's what I can do.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, um, we might open the question. I don't know what else I can tell you, you have all the data. What else would you like to hear? I mean, I could talk all night, but I'm gonna make sure it's relevant and appropriate.
Uh, are there questions for Mr. Anderson? What's that?
Marie just asked you about she, and I said you increased their budget by two percent.
Yeah, which is five hundred bucks.
So the, the repointing of the brick, repainting, you didn't get an estimate for that yet?
Not yet, no.
Any idea what that's gonna cost roughly?
No, absolutely not. And it's, um, it's worked. We've got switches around the building, they have to be taken out because. They're way overgrown and ignored for many years, so the best thing to do is get rid of them. And the repointing is, you know, you need somebody who knows what they're doing. It's an old building, you wanna do it correctly. It's not like the building's gonna collapse, but you can't paint all the stuff that didn't correct.
Yeah, great.
So, uh, no, I haven't found anybody yet to even look at it. Ladies.
Um, it says you'll be conducting one or more fundraising events. Do you have any plan currently as to what you're gonna be doing?
Well, we have a loose plan of doing something fairly substantial. But it's gonna take the cooperation of the local business to. Have a facility, we're thinking about doing something big enough where we can do, uh, raffle and make bingo all up. Nobody has any bingo supplies left. Part of the part of to get rid of it, so.
When the carnival comes back, that's.
That's right, we'll, we'll take that up with the Carnival committee.
And, uh, but, you know, use that, but maybe I can come up with something and. The goal is to do it, uh. At, uh. Mr. Coon's place. You know, the Opera House. And do it substantially, have somebody supply food. Alcohol, whatever, you know, have a good time, turn it into a big party, but make it a fundraiser. Not sure about all the activities and, you know, gotta work with him and find a time that would work. There's a lot of details in there, but that's a thought, so we hope we can pull that off. Uh, we used to raffle off a reef, a reef every month. That was donated to us and that all stopped with COVID. No way you can do anything like that, you can't even deal with people, sell tickets and whatever. And that used to be pretty good money. And I got people asking me about it, is it gonna start up again? Uh, that was volunteered to us. I hate to go ask somebody, could you go back in production? It's a tough one. So we have come up with some other ideas, but book sales are a waste. We've tried tag sales, they're a waste, and they're just annoying. You know, whatever, if you want fifty cents for something, somebody wants to give you a dime. But the time to get done, you're not really making any money, but just spending a day wastes of your time, it doesn't pay.
Have you guys ever considered the establishment of a Friends Up group?
Well, we were offered one once, but it totally failed. And that's a separate group.
Yeah.
You know, we can't establish it. That's, and there's no friends with the Warehouse Point Library anymore either. I remember where that was all and, uh, and that's, it was offered to us and we just said, sure, and never happened. It takes people to do those things. That's where we are. Now I may be looking for a grant. For some of this stuff that we don't have estimates on, but without an estimate, you can't go for a grant, you don't even know what you're talking about.
Other questions for Paul? Steve, anything?
No, I'm good, I shook my head, no, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, thank you. Chief R. Carey, Assistant Chief Paydrop. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Don't mean I operated, you wanna steer yourself up, you got a long way on the way.
Final comment?
I did, we tried to.
I do. Thank you.
Good, good. Paul, I just asked you after, probably, yeah, nice. Thank you. I do everything that I was saying. I don't know, I think you're only one. Well, that one, that one, that one, yeah. There are mine. Yeah, we're doing, well, no, we're gonna go through the slide. We'll just flip it along. Uh, good evening, everybody. So, uh, a little technical difficulty, but, uh, Selectman Bowles is gonna. Steer shift here a little bit. Go ahead and advance. Um. Just to start off, we'd like to just note that depending on where you do your research. On Google or whatever, you're gonna find that the US inflation over the last four years is up thirteen to nineteen percent. Depending on where you can find the information, there isn't anything that's concrete across the board. And as you can see here from the start, since we've started this budget process with you guys, um, back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget time. We've only really increased six percent inflation over the same four-year period. So we're well below the national average today on what information you look up. But I just wanted to keep in mind that while it did go up more than two percent this year, we're still well below where it was. So, uh, and this is just a little bit more on the same slide, just showing you that years one to two was flat, there was no increase. Year two to three, we saw an increase of a little over a percent of twelve thousand seven thirty-nine, and this year. Uh, it's a four point three increase to forty-five, an extra forty-five thousand four thirty-nine. Um, out of this proposed one million fifteen thousand five hundred and five dollar budget. Uh, we'd like you to remember that two hundred thousand of it is our. Improvement program for truck and apparatus replacement, which will never have to come back to the town like we used to, uh, back in the day. Saying we need a X number of money for truck replacement. This is figured into the budget annually. It's gonna pay for a truck lease program, and then as time goes, it's gonna be self-sufficient. So we should never really have to come back unless apparatus gets so crazy, you know, maybe it might go from two hundred thousand to two hundred fifty thousand or something like that. But we don't anticipate that, um, but time, time is gonna be the tell of that. And then that leaves us with eight hundred and fifteen thousand five oh five. Of that, the new line which we encumbered four years ago was the fire marshal line of eighteen thousand seven fifty. Um, the balance of the seven ninety-six, seven fifty-five is our firefighting operating budget. Firefighting gear, equipment, apparatus, maintenance, training, and then the part-time staff costs for the four guys on Monday through Friday, and then the overnight staff of two people, seven nights in the week. So what's driving the budget increases, we're just gonna go through basically the increases, if we have any questions at the end. Um, absolutely feel free to ask. Uh, go ahead. So our lab line for life and auto policy, uh, it went up thirteen hundred seventy-five dollars. Five percent increase over last year, and that's mainly attributed to the arrival of our new fire truck that's supposed to be delivered in August. Obviously, with the price tag of that truck being quite substantially higher than our previous ones, and it being new, that's gonna drive that cost up. Our fuel line, as everybody knows, fuel costs are going up, we increased it a thousand dollars. And on top of that, the DEF for the new fire truck, that's a new emission standard, uh, for diesel engines. We've never had to have DEF before, so we're anticipating that that's gonna be part of that increase as well. DEF, it's part of the time of use speed on DEF, it's.
It takes the, uh, where does it, it's liquid, it's put in, it burns so much, so many ounces per gallon. And when it, when the engine regenerates itself to make the clean emissions, it turns the exhaust fields into water.
Wow, it's even in your diesel pickup truck. Three fifty, two fifty. It's just an added cost of the new end of these days, it's.
I think it was thirty or forty miles per hour.
So. It varies, depends on how much you use the truck, you know, depending on how many hours and how much you use the truck during the week. I'm not sure what the tank holds, Jim, you got a truck with DEF, right, what's it, a twenty-gallon tank?
Yeah, I think it's like, uh, twelve or fifteen.
Okay, how often do you, you do?
We, we fill it up probably more, um, than a normal truck does because we don't. Run hot enough unless we're actually pumping or something out of the night, is it? Because we all get them hot enough like, you know, over the road trucker, we'll be able to fill them up.
So it, you know, it can be common to tank off once a week, twice a week, it all depends. We're just, this is gonna be all new to us, so. Uh, next slide. So IT computer services, which we've never really had in there before. Uh, that's for department emails and virus protection, uh, which added. Uh, we never, we didn't have this in last year's budget, so that's eighteen thousand five hundred, that's six thousand dollars a year for email subscriptions for, uh, members. And twelve thousand five hundred for daily virus and backup of our system. If you would ask me if we'd ever be at this point juncture. And in this time and date and age, I would have called you crazy, but we actually had, I think I mentioned it at the last, uh, workshop, we had. We had a virus scare, and this is unfortunately just. I think it's, uh. Something that you're gonna see much more often with viruses and stuff, you have to protect yourself, so that's where we're at with that.
Is that in your do compete line?
No. Yeah, it was a B, yes, but you're training again, undertraining, yes.
Is that actually joining the towns email or separate?
It's separate.
Okay.
We're using this towns vendor, so we didn't have to, yes.
So you'll have your own domain now?
We have our own domain now, but this, we've never had any virus protection per se. Well, any of our computers, so. I, I just died, Eddie.
Will pass.
Yeah.
And then the part-time payroll increased three thousand six sixty-four. Last year, the line wasn't fully funded to the actual amount of hours that could have been worked in that timeframe, so. This year, the budget was raised to reflect the actual number. In a perfect world, if everybody showed up every day and worked every hour that you're supposed to work, without taking time off and not being able to fill a shift. Um, this brings that budget to a full line. Our firefighter incentive program, uh, due to increased calls and the increased training costs as we are having more members. Take advantage of training, which is good for us, um, it helps us tremendously, the more training they can do, it helps us out. Because we don't catch fires every single day, like maybe a big city, all these classes help that rolodex and somebody said, you know. Things to do, and it gives them the experience, while it's not necessarily on-the-job experience, it gives them. Experience from the instructors that teach those classes and whatnot, so, um, that's what's driving that boss. Workers' compensation set pretty much by the town, it's uncontrollable to us, so that's what they figure it's gonna go up this year, it's four hundred dollars. And our annuity or our length of service program, awards program, this is the, the other biggest portion of this increase. Um, started, achieved two dollars and fifty cents.
Back in nineteen ninety.
Back in nineteen ninety.
This is strictly for the volunteers.
Yep. So back in nineteen ninety, when this plan came about, you had to be there for ten years to be vested, and then after that, you'd get two dollars, two dollars and fifty cents for every year in good standing. So if a member was there, twenty-year-old member was there for forty years, they would get somewhere around a hundred dollars a month. Back in two thousands, they raised it to five dollars a year, which is only gonna give the same person, you know, if they came in at age twenty. They did forty years of service. After the, that ten years investment, um, they were only, they're only getting about two hundred dollars a month. So. Now, if we get a twenty-year-old member in and they do forty years of service, so now you're thinking. Forty years from now, what are they gonna get, two hundred dollars a month is gonna be a drop and a hat. So, um, we're looking at doubling it to ten dollars. A year for every good year of service. Which is still gonna be around, it's gonna double it from maybe two hundred dollars a month, they might get to four hundred. So that's that sixteen thousand five hundred there. And that, we're using this as a recruitment, retention, we're trying to retain the volunteers we have. Obviously, if we can keep the volunteers with us, it's less people we're gonna have to look at filling spots for. And it may be, you know, somebody that's looking for a little something that might entice them to come help us out and volunteer too, so. Yes, I'm sorry. So the total budget increase over last year is up about four point six percent or forty-five thousand four thirty-nine. Um, as I said, we, we try to really give you a bare bones budget, this isn't a, a wants budget, this is a needs budget, so we hope that we can, uh. You know, have your support on this. Chief, is there anything you wanna add?
No, it's, it's, if you, as you, as you already said, everything is bare bones, we didn't, you know, the equipment lines have got nothing in it. You'll see it down through the list, go real good if you want also, whole list. As you can see, a lot of our lines are zero increase. Like the physicals, professional services, phone, vehicle maintenance. Supplies and equipment, all states status quo for the last couple of years. Even though like, um, a big kick now, like with bunker gear, there's PF, all bunker gear has PF in it. All they want, they're trying to do away with all PFAS. So the price of our bunker gear went from thirty-five hundred dollars for pants and coat to fifty-four hundred dollars. And with the new cancer, you know, regulations that are coming out with the states that just mandated something last fall. Uh, they want you to have two sets of bunker gear, you know, the guys can't even come back from a fire in their bunker, they gotta put it in a bag and put it in a bag of pickup truck.
Which we're trying to figure out how to facilitate, because when it's twenty degrees outside and you're soaking wet.
It comes back in the skivvies, you know.
Yes, so we gotta try and work out that, that thing, we gotta come up with our policy, but these are some of the things that are getting thrown at us, and, uh, they're very challenging trying to meet them.
OSHA's coming out too, OSHA's gonna, they're gonna try and manipulate the NFA for the whole country.
OSHA hasn't updated their stuff since, uh. Twenty twenty-one, I believe they said, so it's been over twenty years, they're supposed to be coming out with a revamp with a lot more strict, uh, stringent and stricter. Um, guidelines that are gonna affect us, and it is without going to affect us monetarily as well. We're not sure what it is, it's a six hundred and eight-page document, not all for the fire service, obviously, we're gonna just be a portion of that. Uh, we haven't even opened it up to really look, but there's a lot of stuff in there. We're not sure what's gonna pass, right now it's just, uh, proposed, and they're waiting to hear back from departments across the country to see what exactly they're gonna pass as far as on the fireside. Anybody can look up OSHA regulations right now, it's a two-page front and back. Very bare minimum, now they're gonna be, uh, there was a, a webinar on it. They're going to actually be referencing NFPA documents, so like officer qualifications, um, they're just gonna say, we're gonna reference NFPA, whatever the number is, I think it's ten twenty-one. And if you don't meet those requirements, you're gonna get fined. Or could possibly get fined, uh, that's the other thing, is that the fines brochure are proposed to increase to. For very severe instances, up to sixteen thousand and change. And if you don't fix those severe, if you, if you purposely don't fix or you don't make a good effort to fix those, it's a ten times multiplier. So you're looking at, for each violation. If you blatantly don't correct it, a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars when they come back to re-inspect you, so. I'm not sure if that's gonna fly, if they're gonna change that. It's yet to be seen, so these are just some of the things that we're trying to deal with and. Everybody seems to be against you, yeah. It's gonna be interesting in the years to come, very soon. Hey, uh, I think the last one, just to ask if there's any questions from the board. Questions or comments? Pete?
I'll say, thank you.
Um, I have a question for Amy pertaining to your budget, did, did you go over the twenty-seventh payroll with those?
Did not.
Okay, can we check that, because we're things down? Um, and then. I did have a question on fuels purchasing, do you, do you buy fuel through us?
No.
No?
Well.
Diesel?
No.
No, not the diesel, the gas.
I've got burnt twice by the town steel supplier that cost me forty thousand dollars ten years ago because we were in town. They deliver us all the gasoline twice. We got the trucks, blew more of the trucks, and the town nor the, uh, fuel company would help us out, so we, we took the hit for that, so. Ever since then, we've always dealt with all of us. Or now it's paid on energy, and I refuse to buy fuel for that same distributor.
What about if you were to just tank up at Public Works, would there be a price right there for you?
Well, it's a convenience at the firehouse. Thanks right there, I don't know, I don't know much of a difference for paying, we got, we, we do have to pay one part of the tax, I guess there's a, there's one tax we do have to pay. It's a few cents a gallon.
That sounds like the gas tax, the brochure says taxes on volume.
Because we do the tax, we can charge, we, you don't, we use a couple hundred gallons every couple months, every other month we just fill up. I, I don't wanna go for that aggravation, I'll send it to the trucks. They went through that once, and it cost me seven months of the truck, of the truck, but all service, forty thousand bucks. That was. About ten years ago, eleven years ago, and what happened to us, happened to the bus company, the same vendor. So. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the detailed presentation and.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
In breaking with tradition, making our call last, we'll now have Melissa Maltese, with her departments. I don't think I see. I cannot handle.
Okay. Good evening, thank you for having me for our annual um budget presentation. I am here on behalf of the East Windsor Community Services. Um, division, and that houses East Windsor Senior Social Parks and Recreation and Elderly Commission. Uh, tonight I'll be presenting the budgets for those entities. I will start with the East of their senior services, um, just went through and highlighted some of our active. Um, seniors, some of the responsibilities and functions that we do, so that there's background knowledge as to. What each department and division is responsible for. Um. Any way I can get the.
Yeah, just uh with the, the single hash.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so our seniors visit us daily for a variety of social, emotional uh transportation and health needs. We offer a wide variety of activities, uh both daily, weekly and monthly. We provide a number of social service delivery options such as choices counseling, Medicare counseling. Um, and just general overall um. Social service aspects of the senior population. Uh, we are starting to transition a number of our program offerings to younger seniors in anticipation of moving to our new. Um, community center, so we will be lowering the age to come and participate at the senior center to fifty-five. In order, order to capture that age group. Um, going forward. With that said, uh, we would uh like to announce that we were awarded the thirty thousand dollar um grant. From the state agency on aging and disabilities, ARPA grant, in order to have an inclusive fitness room put into our new facility. And so, um, that is a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to offer. Um, basically a gym room, um, it will have treadmills and exercise bikes. Weights, um, and we'll be able to offer exercise and fitness classes. Um, at the community center. Uh, transportation is a big part of what we do every day, uh, we bring our seniors to and from the center, we take them to their medical appointments. A lot of their daily um. Prescription appointments, hair appointments, banking. Uh, you name it, we pretty much take them there as long as it's within our driving capacity. Um, so far in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which is July to current. We have increased our ridership by, um, by eighteen and a half percent from the same period as last year. And we're also signing up about four plus riders a month in new clients. Um, gone are the days of you need seven days notice to ride our buses. So I'm proud to say in uh the five years, six years that I've been. Overseeing this department, we've come to a, a point in time where we are welcoming. Everybody and anybody that are able to ride our buses and trying to accommodate. Our services based on their needs and not their need based on what we can do for them. So we have become a lot more transparent in regards to being able to take people places and working with them on a more flexible basis. In um July. Two thousand twenty-two to July of twenty-three, we transported seven hundred and six medical rides. Uh, three thousand six hundred and twenty-six rides to the center for lunch and traveled about twenty-six thousand miles. Um, our overall trips um were over sixty-eight hundred. And accounted for an increase of about twenty-nine percent from the previous fiscal year. So, um, with that said, we do unfortunately have to deny some trips. A lot of the times it's because we are booked to capacity. Uh, but we um denied a hundred and fifty-eight trips last year, um, and some of it was due to uh staff. Being on vacation or sick or the weather, so if the schools are closed, we're closed for transportation, we take our buses off just like the schools do. Uh, so I think that's a pretty good uh ratio for us. Nutrition is also a big part of our daily um. Part of life up at the senior center and elderly nutrition program, uh, which is uh supported by CRT, Community Renewal Team. Offers us the ability to offer meals on wheels. Uh, last year we had fifty-nine clients and served over ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-four meals delivered by our volunteers, completely volunteer basis. Um, delivered to our um residents here in East Windsor. Uh, that number changes a lot, um, people fall off the program because they don't need the service anymore. Unfortunately, we're in the business where they do pass away, um, and or some of them just don't like the food after they've had it for quite a bit of time. So they try, fall off for a little bit and then they call us back. Uh, because if you are on kind of um meals on wheels, you can't come into the center. Um, for congregate meals, uh, because you are technically labeled as homebound. So we do have some seniors that will use it just for when they are needing to be homebound, whether they're sick. After a surgery or an illness. Um, and then they'll start coming back to the center, so that number is constantly changing. Um, but the thing that doesn't change is the ability of our volunteers to get them their meals. Um, the senior center congregate meal program served over six thousand meals last year. Uh, we've revitalized our food for thought program and increased the participation of that from five people to twenty. And um, that program is just one where uh our nutrition manager comes in, she picks a food or a drink item. And she does a little research on the benefits of consumption of that. Food or drink item and gives them the ability to try it. Um, this month I think they're doing artichokes, um, they've done coffee, they've done water, um.
Milkshakes?
Milkshakes, they've done cherries, um. A lot of, a lot of good stuff. Um, so we are uh very, very excited for what's to come with that program and moving into our new center will be able to. Expand upon that even more. Um, so everybody's always asking for data in regards to what our programs look like. So service delivery numbers are compiled on a daily, weekly, and then accounted for on a monthly basis per activity, program or service. Um, we've average um anywhere between thirty to forty people depending on what the program is. Um, sometimes our meals, we do have twenty-five people, but then in an afternoon program, the number will pick up. Because they might not want like what was served for lunch that day. We don't get to pick and choose what we have for lunch, it's determined by CRT. So some seniors will bring their own lunch and then they'll stay for an afternoon program. So, um, it's really driven upon what they want for. For themselves, which is their right to pick what they participate in. Um, so this year's uh fiscal year ask of the senior services center is um inclusive of contract contractual obligated salary increases. And four hundred dollar ask in supplies for increased coffee and coffee supply costs, which is. Increase with our program and lunch. Um, the land that has increased, so in my mind, they go hand in hand. Um, so that's the senior center. Any questions?
Why would you, um, you wanna do block it every one?
Uh, it's your, whatever you would like.
Um, any questions on senior services?
I don't, um. I just wanna say thank you for changing that seven-day requirement, because. It will be crazy, so who is here for listening to the people and, and with that, um, but. Um, the other thing that you left out, and I wanna make sure if what I heard is true. You're gonna be providing services from Parkville to the Thursday night events this summer?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I just wanna put that out there, cause I wanna make sure you're not selling yourself short on anything. Um, kudos to you doing that, because I think that's gonna be a plus when we are going up there.
Yes, we are going to utilize our part-time driver as a nighttime driver uh for our Thursday night summer concert series this year, so. Every Thursday, there will be an opportunity for the seniors to take part in our summer concerts at the park.
I hope I didn't interfere, but I just think it's no.
We didn't really go there yet, cause it hasn't been announced officially, but I, that's it's officially announced now.
There's no secrets in this town.
No worries, it's a good, it's a good problem, it's okay. We haven't announced our summer concert dates or anything like that, so I don't want people to start blocking their, their dates or fan preference just yet.
Spoiler alert, those will be Thursdays.
Yeah. Except for one Tuesday for national night, which is the first Tuesday in August, and I'll get to that later in the presentation, so. Any other questions for senior services?
Do you have any questions?
No, I'm, I'm all set for this one.
Uh, just to piggy, I didn't do a slide for the elderly commission, but uh piggyback off of the senior services, the elderly commission. Um, in transition of moving into the new community center, we will be re-establishing the um elderly commission. Um, I have a staff member that's going to be assigned to that, and we're going to change those to daytime meetings. To allow for support staff to be able to attend and not have to pay them extra to attend those meetings. Um, and also seniors like to drive during the day versus in the evening, so. Ms. Lancer will get that medal eventually, so surprise for her.
Surprise.
Um, uh, she's the only seated member left on the elderly commission, unfortunately, everybody else has either passed away or resigned, so. Uh, we'll be reseating people hopefully in the next couple of months, um.
Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Or that. Surprise number three. Uh, so.
It's good.
Yeah. Uh, so my program director will be sitting on that commission for us going forward, so. Um. So that's where we are with elderly commission, so. Um. Social services. So at social services, we're able to aid members of the community who seek us out, who are also referred to us or um. Just happen to be walking by sometimes. Uh, through this process, we conduct individual need, individualized needs assessment, we work with the person to determine their needs. And come up with a plan of action to help them meet those needs to the best of our ability and within our resources. From July of twenty-three to February of twenty-four, we have had six hundred and ninety people sign in for support services. Not inclusive of drop-ins or toy pickups in our office. Um, I will say that um aside from the senior center that is open, um. As a drop-in kind of facility, social services is. Not far behind them in regards to people just drop in. And we try to encourage them to set up appointments with us, but um sometimes when you're in crisis. That policy goes out the window and we, if we can't stop what we're doing to assist them to the best of our ability, so. That number is pretty consistent in regards to our sign-in sheets, but again, doesn't account for emergencies. That sometimes I might forget to go back and sign them in afterwards. Um, energy assistance, that's uh pretty much our biggest program that we offer. Um, and the assistance uh world, we are able to administer energy assistance with the CRT program. Community renewal team again. Um, this year we've processed so far three hundred and one applications, ranging in award amounts from a hundred and eighty dollars to eight hundred and twenty. Uh, for a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars as of um last week. And um that number is going to continue to go up because the state just passed another seventeen million dollars that will be coming down the pipe hopefully in the first week of March. Um. Which will allow us to be able to, um. Once the award money is given to those accounts, be able to offer more dollar amount to our clients. To keep their homes longer than winter. Um, renters rebate is our second largest program that we offer. Um, we're able to help with uh OPM, Office of Policy and Management. And um it is based on the previous year's um income eligibility for um those that are senior and disabled. That do apply for renters rebate, last year we took in eighty-five applications and awarded forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and three cents. Which is funded by OPM. Um, so no town dollars go to that program, we just assist them with making sure that the documentation is correct and getting it into the portal. Um, evictions are now our third largest support system. Uh, unfortunately, these are increasing rapidly with the courts catching up on three-plus years of leniency due to COVID. Um, currently I'm averaging about five to six of those per month. Um, just so you are aware. People have anywhere from ninety to a hundred and twenty days typically, uh, but some of these people have had three-plus years. Um, so they're looking at being behind in their rent, um, my. Largest one in the last two months has been forty thousand dollars. Um, the courts took that long to get them out of their apartment. And um then we were left with their stuff because they just walked away. Um, so we are um mandated by the state to take their items and store them in storage for fifteen days. The owner can then come take care, take over the unit, they can take their items, or um we have to either auction the unit or donate what we can. Uh, we also work with Public Works um to dispose of anything that we can't find homes for. Um, so.
And you have to auction the unit in total, not.
Totality, yeah. Yep, and it's sight unseen, like I think we're allowed to open the door halfway.
Where does the money go from the auction?
So I've never done that.
It goes to you.
It would go to the general fund.
To the general.
Um, because they, we, the town pays for the storage unit, um, but I'm not trying to get into the. Unless Chief wants to be my auctioneer. Which would be surprise number four. Uh, relocation act, um, this was something that was um definitely prevalent and for us in the last five years. Um, thankfully, we are out of that business right currently, and what. Uh, but again, we are um Connecticut general statutes, it's a federal, actually federal law. That requires us to get involved, um, when people need to be relocated due to their home being condemned by either the building department, the health department. Or a natural disaster or anything like that. So we have to assist them with temporary housing, storage fees, security deposits, first month's rent. Um, and I will say that the housing shortage has led to longer stays for those that are looking to be relocated. So. Other responsibilities that we have at social services, um, we help with nutritional needs, um, for seniors and disabled. Again, we offer farmer's market coupons uh with the support of Department of Agriculture. Last year we did twenty-eight clients for eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and farmer's market coupon. We did two hundred and one families for Thanksgiving and two hundred and seventy-three families for a turkey and a gift card at Christmas. So far this year, we've assisted thirty-one clients with SNAP determination or redetermination by setting them up a portal with the state of Connecticut. Instead of sending them to DSS for those same services, if we can keep them in town to get the support services, we try really hard to do that. So, another reason why moving into one center just makes more sense. Some additional support um assistance programs, we started a veterans assistance program with the Veterans Commission this year. They were um so gratefully able to give us um. A, a chunk of money, and we work with them to um determine the eligibility of the veteran and or their family. For their emergency need. Uh, we do backpacks with the schools to get them um backpacks and shoes to go back to school with. Um, we work with CHR for mental health services, and this year for our holiday toy program, we were able to supply toys. Um, to a hundred and fifty-three kids in East Windsor. Um. Program numbers, they change as the economy changes during COVID, there were several funding sources that became available to help. A lot of those funding sources um have gone away, and also the demand at the food pantry is up. Um, and just a shout out for Marie there, they do need volunteers during the day, if anybody. Uh, knows of anyone that's looking for a Monday or a Tuesday afternoon or morning activity, the food pantry at Five Quarter Cupboard could always use some extra hands. Um, so. Um, and the ask for this year is just inclusive of contractual obligated salary increases.
Questions or comments on social services? Questions or comments on Social Services?
I just got a question on, on the general assistance, um. It was reduced by seventeen thousand dollars and you commented that you probably have zero. But do we anticipate a change? Or we just hope we, that we'll be lucky and nothing will happen?
Um, it's not really going down.
Yeah, it's going up, it's just going up by less, it was driven by the relocation.
We had to do a lot of additional appropriation this year, and we had so many people located. That we did a lot of additional appropriations for them, so she's actually going from, I think our original budget was thirteen to seventeen. The additional money between the thirteen and the forty, whatever that's there, it was additional appropriations by anything more than finding.
Okay.
So far this fiscal year.
Just for clarification for anybody that may be listening.
Other questions or comments, Kate?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Melissa, I have a question about the veterans um services or the veteran's support that you're talking about. So are homeless veterans eligible for um for those funds? Or do they have to be um residents or, or veteran with residence, residents in town?
Uh, so we would uh interview the person that is looking for the support services. And uh we would vet them to the best of our ability based on the documentation that they can give us. And then um work with the Veterans Commission to determine whether they feel they are eligible for the program. And then uh either refer them to support services through the VA. Um, or find them a connection to a VA supporter um or the Veteran Service Officer who um is Bob-like. Um, to get them the support that they need, so that's not a no. Um, it just might be a little bit of extra legwork on our part to determine whether they're technically residents of this community.
And the, and the money that's raised by the Veterans Commission, I think that you're administering the uh, the, the program for them. Is that money that's part of the placed into a town budget line item, or is it remain with the Veterans Commission?
I'll answer that question.
Go ahead.
Um, the veterans raise money to keep it in their own donation account, and they give Melissa an allocation. That goes over to her program for her to give assistance to the veterans. But it's all handled by the commission, the commission makes the decision of how much money is getting sent over to Melissa to use for her assistance program that she has. So they gave me fifteen hundred dollars this year to keep in my Fund Sixty-Seven line. I then asked them before we withdraw any money from it, they have to do the final approval of the veteran. Based on after we vet them and what my staff recommendation is uh based on their income eligibility.
So they gave uh fifteen hundred dollars last year, and then you would um determine how much of that would go. Uh, which veterans would qualify, but then you go back to them and they would say, yeah, we wanna service, uh provide services for this particular person or not?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, well, thank you for all the hard work that you and your department are doing. On all these very important um community outreach programs and services, thank you.
Other questions or comments on Social Services? Okay.
The other photos that are just on this slide are just some other community events that we've done for community outreach. Um, again, back to school, working with Crossroads Community, our Panther Plunge, that was last weekend. We raised eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, both Broadbrook and Warehouse Point Fire uh Departments helping us with holiday food distribution. We were a recipient of a thousand dollar grant from the Greater Together Community Fund. Um, love our opportunities we have to work with these ones, our police department and our Shop with a Cop program. And their relationship has now connected us with USA Hauling for an expansive toy drive during the season. So those are just some of our community outreach that has come to us um over the last few years. And last, but certainly not least, is Parks and Recreation. So um some of our ac- activities, functions and responsibilities, or administer programs and events for the residents of East Windsor and surrounding communities. Uh, facilitate the usage of town parks and fields, search and secure grant funding, working in conjunction with their town departments and serve as a liaison. To the youth sports organizations and other various groups that request assistance. Um, some of our parks and facilities highlighted um on these, and these are all on our um Facebook page as well as our website. Uh, so there's a description of each park and playground. Um, we are working to complete our sign program where we've replaced all of the park signs so that they are universal. And all have addresses because we've had a lot of new first responders come into the community. And whereas you or I may know what uh Pierce Park is, they may not. So having an address associated to them um and then talks with them have come in handy um going forward. So we are almost completed with those programs of replacing all the signs in our parks that we are responsible for. Um, added this year were the Trolley Crossing Park and Sabonis Landing. Uh, so we strive to make East Windsor a great place to live, work and play. Uh, so this is part of the tagline where Jason says I'm in charge of everything fun. And uh, some of the new programs we brought in were Archery Camp. Uh, we have a staff member now, Samantha, she is trained as a facilitator for CPR and AED. So all of my community service member staff are now certified in CPR and AED. We are going to be working to um complete my goal as an employee this year um to get all town staff. For um certified in CPR and AED. Um, we did Storytime at the Splash Pad, youth wrestling in partnership with South Windsor. And are offering lifeguarding classes, oops, sorry. In partnership with Winter Locks Parks and Recreation and this year with Enfield Parks and Recreation. So again, Samantha got trained as a facilitator to train lifeguards. So in exchange, uh we are using their pool facility and she's teaching the class. Um, without an indoor pool, it's a great trade-off. Uh, we took in two hundred, oh sorry, six hundred and four nine transactions through our MyRec program um since July first this year. Hundred and twenty-one new family accounts have been created, uh seventy-two residents and forty-nine non-resident families. Were recipient of eight hundred thousand in state bond dollars for installation of lights and playgrounds within the parks in East Windsor. And recipient of five hundred thousand dollars of town dollars, harbor dollars for installation of pickleball courts and park improvements. On the Warehouse Point section of East Windsor, specifically at Volunteer and Osborne Park. And uh this summer, we received a grant from the Greater Together East Windsor Committee again. For swim lessons, we were able to offer to East Windsor residents at no cost. And this year um we were granted another two thousand dollars to offer after-school programs. Uh, for Broadbrook School and East Windsor Middle School students. Uh, this year's ask is inclusive of contractual obligated salary increases. Um, part-time salary minimum wage increase, which is state mandated. Salary compression avoidance, we try to be cognizant that um those that are getting minimum wage get an automatic increase. And those that have been here for a long time um don't necessarily get that same increase. Um, and then two summer interns, which were maintenance and program-driven. We also asked for an increase in professional services to purchase three all-weather emergency AED boxes. And um as you can see from the updated budget sheets, the second intern and three of the boxes were removed um by Jason's recommendations.
I, I remove the AEDs in particular because I think that we can accomplish them in the current fiscal.
Yep. We are always welcome to be creative in our funding source. Uh, and we are hiring for our summer staff, so I did throw that on there. Cuz we'll put this up on our website in case anybody's looking for a seasonal position or has a child sixteen or up that are looking for.
Any questions or comments uh for Melissa? I, I actually will go first, I just. I do want everybody to, to know that she was recognized by her Professional Association this year as the outstanding professional. In Parks and Recreation in the state of Connecticut. Um, and I think that that shows the work she does. Questions or comments for Melissa? Kate?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, oh, that's because we did, we did a person, a person in the green house. Um, but we have one coming up for leap year. So don't you worry, it'll be announced probably on Monday. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Mister Norton? Yep, you're up. Amy, would you like to join us at the table? Have three.
Thanks.
Any preferences? I don't know how they're listed in here.
Uh, they're listed Department of Public Works, Vanetation, Decadent Press, Rose, IP, and Goerden. Not numerical at all.
Well, you know, I was paying attention. Okay. Well. You have my numbers. I'm gonna keep it simple. Salary uh has gone up a bit due to contractual obligations. Um. Therefore, the uh. Overtime, I'm bumping that up just a little bit be- because of that, just to kind of accommodate that. Uh, professional services goes up a little bit, supplies and equipment goes up a little bit. And uh you can see down below, well, I don't know if you can see down below, you have my sheet. Okay, um, you know, what kind of spells it out for what the professional services are, what the supplies and equipment are. And then the, obviously, the education dues. So it's, it's really, the only increases are due to. This necessity for contracts.
Jason, you didn't cut anything with them this time, right?
No, I did not. Um, next is. Sanity, uh Kate, do you have any questions on Public Works?
I, I did, thank you. Um, my, my question was, um Len, I'm looking at the budget and I know that um a lot of. A fairly substantial amount of contractual work is done by outside vendors. And I'm trying to see if in this, is it, is it within this budget that we're looking at here? Where we have the um, the expense for outside contractors that are hired by the town to do roadwork and other kinds of work? Or is that in another line item in the budget?
That, and any, any of the work that the uh contractors do um on roadwork and what have you is, is under the roads. The roads budget line. If it's drainage, it would come out of drainage, which actually is in uh.
C N R.
C N R. But any of that contracted work, that's not actually in the public works budget itself, it's in the, in the roads budget.
Are, are we gonna see the roads budget tonight or, or no? Is that part of what we're looking?
Yep.
Well, okay, all right, I'll wait for that, thank you, thank you, Len.
Um, next is sanitation. Ah, everyone's fingerprint top, not mine. So. Sanitation is one of those things, it's basically trash and recycling. Um, it's gotta be collected. And it has to be disposed of. The uh collection part. Is based upon, uh you know, the truck drivers are hourly rate and all that fun stuff. The disposal gets a little crazy because we are at the end of a very. Very good um contract that we've had for five years. We are like, I, I'm thinking they may not even be making money when they pick up our trash, it, it's that good. Um, it, that happens to expire in August of this year. So I have some numbers here based upon conversations and trying to extend things out a little bit. That's what I have for numbers here, they aren't really cast in stone yet because. Number one, we're gonna be out of a contract in August. And then we're going to, we're looking at um. Other towns have. Somewhat recently gone into contracts, some are negotiating now. Uh, some are doing five-year contracts, some are doing ten-year contracts. Um, the best bait for anybody's buck is, believe it or not, is a ten-year contract because you tie them up. For ten years, which is, uh we're in such a good spot now because. We're, we're, we're working on something that was held in place basically from five years ago. When things were much less expensive than they are today, and then they projected that out, it's like four percent a year or something, and. We got the better end of that stick. Um, unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna have a good stick once uh we get the contracts now. I mean, things, things have gone up, so. We're, when we see the new numbers, if, whenever we get around to it, we're gonna see exactly how well we did because. Um, we're paying ninety-seven dollars a ton, ninety-seven dollars and ten cents, I think, a ton. For uh. Make solid waste disposal right now, those numbers are in the one fifteens and one twenties and higher. So. But anyhow, that's, that's where we are, that's my uh, that's my spiel on sanitation. I wish I had better news. We uh briefed each other on, on that um at our recent meeting, and I think. Working with you, we're gonna continue to see what we can do to hammer that down a little bit, but. Any, any questions on sanitation?
No, thank you, I'm good.
Town property. Okay, town property, uh town property is what it costs to do business. Basically with our buildings and vehicle maintenance. As um we've gone up a little bit on the phones, um a little bit on vehicle maintenance. We're pretty well expended on our vehicle maintenance uh line. Currently, I think out of the eighty thousand, we're somewhere around sixty we've spent.
Yes, go.
Um. Building repair, obviously, those are the repairs that make the building. Um, the wa- the water line is actual physical water that you're drinking water, portable water that we get to the buildings. The hydrant line is what we pa- we pay for hydrants by the hydrant and by the foot of water main that uh. Uh, I think it was, got a good gig there, actually. Um, sewer is set, it sewer is, you know, we're paying for our EDUs. Uh, custodial services. We're holding it even. Although I think we're. I think the, the bottom line is that's gonna, it won't, that line won't go up, but. We'll probably rob Peter to pay Paul and, and somewhere in there because uh what do you call? Minimum weight went up another sixty cents, that, that's kind of still on us. Um, supplies, a few thousand extra equipment, a thousand extra, we went down a little bit in electric, electricity and streetlights. Went up a little bit on the propane, went up a little bit on our oil and heat. And our gas and diesel for our uh, basically as the gas and diesel for our uh vehicles. We feel we can keep that um flat based upon our uh. We, I don't know if anybody's been to the town garage, we have two brand-new eight-thousand gallon tanks. One's got the, one's got the. We can buy at a much better price now cuz we just filled those and we, we can buy a tanker at a time. So you get a lot, you get a lot better deal when you're buying the tanker versus buying a, you know, buying two thousand gallons at a time, we can buy seven. So uh. And the whole, the whole bottom line is it goes, goes up a little over eight thousand dollars for that. Any questions on town properties?
How much do you think with the new tanks you've been saving or?
It's, I, I don't know, it will. Save as much as will not have to increase, basically. We've got more trucks online, it, and honestly, it depends on winter, we're doing pretty well right now because we haven't had much. it depends on winter. We're doing pretty well right now because we haven't had much of a winter. So it's really, you know, plus the fire departments, how busy they are. Well, fire department. Well, no, because Broadbrook still gets unleaded from us. Warehouse point gets diesel and flooded. So it's, it's really a function of, we can save per dollar per gallon, if you will, cents per gallon, but the overall, it's like the use, the usage.
Also, there's some variability based on what the price per gallon.
Well, yes, right, but we, we can do pretty well with the quantity we buy there.
Other questions or comments on the property?
You mentioned the heating units in the town hall annex or you gotta replace more of them. Is that reflected here in what, building repair?
That will be Joseph, that's gonna be under
Yes.
Building repair.
What are they, mini splits or something like that or?
Oh, the rooftops.
rooftops.
Keith, anything from you?
I, I do. Thank you. You know, looking at this list of, of, I don't know, twelve or fifteen items, there's like no change for any single item for the last budget cycle. And we've seen in other departments that some expenses go up as, and some expenses go down. And this is entirely flat. I mean, what's being done, when, when was the last time, Len, that, that you guys looked at best practices? To see what could be done to optimize some of these line items? To, to start bringing some of these costs down? Is there anything that can be done there? Because again, I, I would expect that there would be some things that would be decreasing over time, or there'd be some cost savings that we can find to, to offset some of the increases that are occurring. But this, this li- this list of fourteen or twelve or fifteen items is just completely flat. And, and it looks like just budgeting the same as last time. Is, is there efforts to try to get some cost savings on some of these?
Well, the, the cost savings are, a- as you can see, we're, we've saved twenty thousand dollars between our electricity and our streetlights. And that's
By, by converting our buildings also.
We're, we're, we're in a contract, you know, for the, for cents per kilowatt. And we've converted LEDs in almost all the buildings. I think we got a little bit of work to do in this building. But we've, we've done that. Things like the water and the hydrants and the sewer, that's all based upon the W P C A, if they go up on their rate per E D U, which they did. That's, that, that's our eleven-hundred-and-eighty-six-dollar increase. The water and the hydrants, that's Connecticut Water Company basically tells us what that is, and that's based upon the number of miles of water main and hydrants that we have and the number of hydrants that we have. You can see we've, some of the fixtures we've changed in the in the buildings, toilets and sinks and what have you. We're able to save almost three thousand dollars with the water. Things like foam is, is foam. Vehicle maintenance, could we hold that flat? Yes, but unfortunately, some of our fleet's getting older and you know, the parts, parts are very expensive. We have our own mechanic that does ninety-five percent of the work. It's gotta be pretty big and, and difficult to deal with for us to have to send it out. So, I mean, that's, that's where we are, like the oil and the heat, things like that. It's, it's a function of the cost per gallon, you know?
Well, the
Just to draw your attention to the screen here, what I, what I've highlighted is of the current fiscal year and the department head requests. So as you can see, only two of the lines are actually the same from the previous year. So they are, they are making adjustments to those individual line items as they go along.
Well, I, I see that, and I appreciate your highlighting them, but with the comparison here is the revised budget from last year versus the department head request versus your first selectman light item. But we would really look at the year-to-date actuals, and I know that we're in the middle of the budget cycle. So we don't really know what the actual will be at the end of the cycle. But looking, for example, the year-to-date actual for electricity is right now at forty thousand dollars. And the budget is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And, and I, and I understand we may hit a hundred and ten. But, you know, it'd be good to see, you know, if someone was able to extrapolate these numbers out to get a better sense of where we're gonna hit because, you know, this is one-point-two-five-one-million-dollar budget. It doesn't include anything for salaries or benefits. It's all these expenditures. And it just, it just continues to rise pretty significantly. And I was just asking a question, but I appreciate your highlighting it here for me to be able to, to see the comparison. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to roads. Road improvements. For the actual road improvement budget. I had asked for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars for salt and sand. Which I know disappeared. And I asked for an additional five, two-hundred-thousand dollars for road maintenance, which I know disappeared. So my budget there was flat. Just so you know, on the salt and sand part, this, this particular year, the sands stayed at eleven dollars a ton. However, the salt went up from sixty-seven dollars a ton to seventy-two forty a ton. So we went up almost five and a half dollars a ton for salt. And it doesn't ever get less expensive, so granted, this year we've had a pretty mild I am, I actually racked the material we used for storm. Just to keep an eye on it and see what we're doing, make sure we're not having too many, you know, tons per mile down and what have you. And we're doing well. But that was my reasoning for asking for a little more money. And obviously, on the road maintenance part, just to be able to do more with what we have. We've been pretty fortunate the past few years. We had a real good contractor this past year. I put my own contract out this year for paving and got a really good road contractor, really good paving contractor and I'm hoping to be able to extend that contract for another year because they did great work. Worked with us good, but, you know, it's a function of, we'll do what we can with the money we get if we if we get three hundred thousand, we'll do three hundred thousand worth of work. If we get a half a million, we'll do a half a million dollars worth of work. Then we have roads that we need to unfortunately, some of the roads we have to work on were, there's this, there's one section of Wells Road that I'm trying to design and I can't yet figure out how to get rid of the water, but I'm getting close. But that's gonna be a full-depth reconstruction of that road. Which means it all comes out and goes back, at different elevations and what have you. So that's obviously a little more costly than, you know, putting two inches or four inches of hot mixed asphalt on top of what's there, grinding it up. It's, it's gonna be pretty expensive and and there are, you know, we do have some roads in town where we're gonna need to do that. But that's that. I mean, you know, we'll, obviously, we'll do what we can with what we get.
Trolley road is still not completed yet. You still have work to do there. There's that, just past the bend.
By ninety-seven, it's ninety-seven trolley, the drain.
Well, we, we were done there. However, there's a pipe that is collapsed. The, the water, the fields where you go into the field trials, there's a catch basin there and water comes down, the, the driveway basically goes in into the catch basin, and then it went out across ninety-seven, Trolley Road, their, their front yard. Well, we've been in the pipe, looking pipe, so now we're gonna, I have to put one or two structures, I gotta put a new, at least one new catch basin. Maybe another new catch basin and then run another pipe all the way down. It's, geez, it's probably three three or four hundred feet, yeah, say four hundred feet. And there's a pipe that then goes under Trolley Road and heads to the, heads to the south. Sort of towards the area over there that Larry Tribble gave to the state when he did whatever he did. So that's, yes, with the, the pay, I don't have to I'm crossing my fingers. I don't have to get into the road and mess with my new pavement. I can keep all the structures and all the piping off the road, but yes, we do need to do that. And I wanted to do it before it froze, but it's so wet there, it's very difficult. But yes, we gotta finish that up.
Can I add a question for some lawyers? With the expert rain that we've got, I know we haven't had a lot of snow, but rain has been detrimental. The scenic river. It runs, all the water runs from Wall Grove from part crosses over down through the back, down through the side of my property and out and it goes down one-forty to church and then the little bridge there. I noticed the state was out there the other day. I don't know what they were doing. Hopefully, they were trying to unblock some stuff. But I know I'm starting to have problems again because the water's not going out again.
Over, goes through the property, across the street from you, the church and whatever.
And then I kind of walked it without telling myself to see, and it's plugged everywhere. I think it's because of all the rain, it just backing everything up. I'm hoping with them out there, but I just throw that out there just because if warm weather starts to come and the water continues, you might have some more flooding on Rice Road again. I would hate to see that. I'll do my
Me too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my, you know, partisans. Hopefully this week will be a nice, nice day and I'll be able to come to that cold, see if I can dig it out, but.
I think a year or two ago, I walked through there with the, someone that owned the property. I don't know, I don't remember if it was the church or
Probably the church because they had thrown down trees.
There's, yeah, there was, there's like a swale or natural water that goes through there, yeah.
Some stuff that flooded. I'm doing my best to keep it quiet, but I'm old enough to do that.
Well, we, you know, we'll have to, we'll, we'll talk to them again, see if we can get them to clean it up. You know? Well, let me know.
Other questions for Len?
And it's not for me, it's to make sure that nothing ever happens like it did the year that I had this season business from years ago when I dig that little sliver of the water we drained off and then that part hit the patch. When the ice came, one right into the top, the four crops, I don't ever want to have that happen again because
Some years ago, you had a paving study done and, and kind of graded all the, there was a road study, not a paving, so you graded all the roads. You know? You know, so these roads needed resurfacing, these roads need a complete rebuild, you know, so on and so forth. Are you still using that to plan your
Yes.
road improvement stuff or have you not exhausted that?
Oh, no. No, as a matter of fact. I, I, I could talk about it when we get to I T, or I could mention it now. I, I did put in my I T budget, a software budget for some software that we could put basically an iPhone with a program in it and drive around the roads. It would pick up potfalls, road conditions and all that. And we wouldn't have to go out and I, I'm gonna now have to go out and hire my consultant again to drive the roads because the software came out of this I T budget, but it's the same company we're using, V H B out of Weathersfield. They started, my, it must be ten years ago now?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Who's counting? But yes, we, we have actually updated that one or two times. And I, and I have a like a little spreadsheet myself too, and I just, I go by the roads, you know, the, we, we go the the, the P C I index, the pavement condition index. Ninety is good. Thirty, not so good. And I'm, I'm trying to do that. I did, I did some smaller roads this past summer that were in bad condition because they are part of our infrastructure. You know, people are like, why are you doing a, a road with twelve houses on it? Well, because we own it and we have to maintain it. But yes, I use that. I'm still going by that and I'll probably have to redo that this summer.
Yeah, it'd be good to see what our progress has been because I think we have made some progress.
Oh, absolutely. We're doing, we're doing quite well, actually.
In the interim between when that study was done and now, there was a five-million-dollar road on, right?
Two-point-seven?
Yeah, not five.
It was total five billion, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The other half was the modelers.
I mean, we're not doing, you know, great, but we're not doing bad. We're, we're doing good. I mean, we're, we're doing what we can.
Keith, you had questions on roads?
Yeah, Len, last year, I think it was that the town purchased a few hundred thousand dollars of new construction equipment. And I just wanted to ask you, you know, what, what kind of projects are are, is the town staff doing with that equipment versus what we're hiring in this road line item here for outside contractors? Can you give us idea what's happening with that equipment?
Yeah, yeah, I do, actually. We're doing smaller, we can't, we don't have, none of the equipment we bought was like really big. So we have a mini excavator and a backhoe, so we can do we can do some culvert projects if we have a cross culvert that's not too complicated. We don't have a, a large excavator, which makes it difficult to do the large drainage projects. We, we the bigger, the bigger the P C equipment, the more you can do. The, the actual road projects that we're doing here, these people are coming in. They're digging out the road. They're, or grinding up the road. They have, they have reclaiming machines or pulverize, they pulverize the road or they grind up the whole road right down into the base. We don't have anything like that. And of course, we don't, we do not have a paving box. We can't even really go out and like fix a road very easily because we don't have a paving box. They're very expensive. So the, the equipment that we have, which is the mini excavator and the backhoe, is mostly for drainage things. If we have a swale we need to clean out, if we have a culvert we need to fix. It, it's for that type of project, more so than like an actual road project.
And I thought, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that the town purchased, spent like three hundred thousand dollars for a, some kind of bucket loader or some kind of a, a large equipment like that last year. Am I wrong about that?
We bought a, we bought a, a, a front-end loader, yes, but that's, that's for moving material around. It's for you know, picking up, you can throw logs in it if you have to. You can, we use it to load our trucks with material. It's not really used for, for road, road work or construction work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All set, Keith?
I'm all set, thank you.
Anybody else at the table? I T.
We have one. Ten-thirds of that.
Well, I, if there's any technical questions, Joel can answer, but really, it's basically the professional services are driven by, you know, our cybersecurity issues, virtual town hall, web design. We got some cloud backup, we got barricudas. It's basically what it costs to do business. The softwares are by department. Joe puts out an email, asks, you know, several months before the budgets do, asks the department heads what they need for software, for the most part, it's what's your software that you have gonna cost next year? And that's basically shown on the software line. If you have a specific question, I'm sure Joel would be happy to answer. I sort of manage it, but
So making question that I have. Yes, so I don't see, and maybe it's So in in a line, but I don't see anything for an audit.
An audit, cybersecurity is, that's, that's our audit. Uh, we actually switched over to Hunter's. Which is, uh, to Microsoft, it's a Microsoft, which is actually. Those audits every. All the time, I mean, it audits everything, it's crazy, but our cyber, our cybersecurity audit will be done next year. If not, maybe before the end.
Right, so this is not really an audit, I mean, this is.
Well, like we did last year, we'll, we'll.
Next year.
Yeah, we'll go through and we'll. Check our vulnerabilities, have them come in and give them our I P addresses.
Been how many years now since we did it?
There'll be two years. This, yeah, July.
We just finished a part of it last summer.
Well, we're doing with with our consultant, we're doing a lot of, you know, we're we're more vigilant with everything as far as that goes, I mean. Uh, the the bear, the Barracuda. Um, not only is a car, but that's our backup.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, I I I think that we.
It's there, it's under cybersecurity, I call it cybersecurity.
For cybersecurity, but that's for Microsoft auditing of.
No, that's for the, uh, I apologize, I can't remember the company that did it for us last time, same people.
Okay, so we'll see that report?
Yeah, if, like I say, if if all goes well in this year's budget, gonna get done now.
Okay, good.
You know. But, um, I feel confident that we don't have to do it every year. So ev- every, every two years, I think we're fine.
I'm glad you're confident, I'm not.
Well.
We do it at least every year per application, some applications are even more, I mean, this is a government. Entity, I think, but I mean, I think you you read, everybody reads, right, you read up the way it's been happening.
But offline, we could get into exactly what I'm doing, but I probably shouldn't, you know.
I just want to make sure that we're.
We are.
And we have. Reports.
Yes, monthly I get reports.
Okay, I'd like to look at some of those.
So why don't, why don't you guys hook up offline, because I understand why we wouldn't want to have that conversation.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's in the budget and we are spending.
We are, we are there. That's it.
That's one. I have a couple, I have a question.
Wait. So let me make sure we didn't cut G I S off.
No.
Okay, we're there.
Also, yeah, this is there, we're actually doing great things with layers, more and more, um. Actually, we just mapped out all our parks. So we're, we're doing a lot of stuff, plus I just got an. Uh, email to do some more, uh. Water control stuff that we have to do through the M S four program. But, yeah, we, uh, we're taking full advantage of the money we get. Through them maintaining it through this budget and through C N R with doing the projects that we do. Through planning and everybody, even wetlands did layer of. Yep, so.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else at the table?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Um, so, uh, let me just ask a first question, all the software that gets installed. In the town computers, is that, um, done by town staff, or is that paid, is that installed by a consultant?
Most of the software that's we use is virtual. So it's proprietary to Q D S, which is the tax collector software, it's all cloud based, so nothing really gets. Loaded on our computers like the old days. Uh, there are, um. There are, uh, access that we do in-house, if not, then our consultant does it. But. There's not a lot of. Consulting work that needs to be done there because most of the vendors support their software.
You said earlier that the department heads roll in what they're looking for for their software and and calculating the budget, so that. Information about what's what's rolling out into the town. Um, in I T system is coming from the individual department heads.
The department heads choose the vendor that they're using or, you know. The, the software versions they like to use. Outlook is managed by us, which is through Microsoft, which gives us all our Excel, our Word. All that's user based, and it's all cloud based. So nothing's installed there, you click on the icon, it takes you to the web, and it takes you right to. Everything you need.
So my, my comments are, um, that looking at the budget, you know, it's, it's growing and it's, it's quite substantial right now, we're looking at three hundred and. Fifty-three thousand dollars and we heard tonight that Broadbrook Fire Department has to pay for. I T to get their, um, email system set up and connected to the town. I heard, I think that the police department has to hire a separate I T professional to do work that they need. I've heard from various boards and commissions that, um, they're struggling with their data. It sounds to me like, um. You know, the concern is we're starting to pay a lot of money for I T services and maybe. It's time that we start rethinking. The methodology of rolling out I T into the town departments. You know, other towns have an I T professional that's, um, specifically trained and go to goes to I T conferences, et cetera. I'm not commenting on anybody here in the town, by the way, in terms of the qualifications, but they have an I T specialist. That, um, that, that, uh, brings efficiencies into the town, brings cost savings and makes sure that security is. Is robust in every, every department. And kind of oversees the management of the town strategy for information technology, um. If this was a much smaller budget, you know, as it was a few years ago, I don't know if it would, it'd be a flag for me, but we're getting up to. You know, a third of a million dollars over that and, um. And we're having a lot of, we're having other departments having to spend additional monies to try to do what they want to do. Um, Joe, have we looked at, um, revamping or or reorganizing the I T department to address some of these? The, the concerns that I'm raising about. Having more of a strategy. For cost savings and a strategy for robust security. And a strategy for making sure that where we need to be, we're getting to where we need to be in five years and ten years.
So currently we pay less than twenty, well, about twenty, we budget twenty thousand dollars. For our consultant, so that, but he basically manages our I T system. Okay, we really don't have a dedicated town. A staff person other than myself who. You know, will help somebody turn their computer on or get them logged in. After that, it goes to the consultant, so that's what we're paying there. It's fired, as far as the only other. Expense in this budget outside of. Uh, the software costs and the software costs are all driven by the departments. And the departments, you know, and honestly, you have a permit, we'll, we'll take building and planning, you have a permit link. Well, permit link is their permitting software. And there's. They, they put this stuff out the bid in the past and. Got in the lowest bid and went with the company, they felt that was the best, that's no different, that the accessory uses a. Vision software, the clerk uses a new vision software, uh. Melissa uses a charity tracker, all these, all this stuff is just, uh, cloud based software that. That's where the price increases are, as far as the budget, you know, as far as the internal workings of. I T, it's the twenty thousand and then the six thousand, the higher consultant to do the cyber audit. So you're talking about twenty-six thousand dollar. Um, cost to run that whole department.
So just if I could offer a point of clarification and then add a point that, um, probably should be addressed. The point of clarification is that a number of years ago, I think when Denise Minar was first selected. Um, the decision was made to centralize a number of things, so. Central supplies, it was taken out of each individual department line and put in one, one line. And it's drawn off of by every department that needs it, same thing happens with. I T, so what you're seeing here is all of the software costs that are necessary across town government. There's no additional I T costs that are in individual department line budgets, so that's just a point of clarification. Um, the one omission that I just want to add, um, when Chief Carl and Deputy Chief Murphy. Assume their, their responsibilities within the police department, putting together their budget. One of the things that they did that is a significant driver of our I T cost increases is they, they're no longer using. Um. Funding sources that were not appropriate for I T costs like asset forfeiture. To, um, support the department's I T, so we made the conscious decision that those costs. Properly should be in the I T budget, and so he, he has unloaded those onto the I T budget through, um, Len and Joe. So that's, and if you look at that. Um, the total increase for police software is thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The total increase for the department in total is thirty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars, so it's almost entirely driven. By correcting that, uh, accounting move with the police department, so. Everything else is effectively neutral.
And the other, the, the difference key in that budget also is the barracudas, barracudas are where we store and where we. Keep all our. All our clients, and it's a backup system. So those Barracuda units were only, they were only one terabyte each. Well, with all the recordings and all the videos and everything the police does, we had to up. Their side because they were out of space, on the town side, we were encroaching about. Uh, we were encroaching about being three quarters, so about seven hundred and fifty megabytes. Close to the terabyte, so at the same time, we increased bolt to one terabyte. So those units are here in-house and they, well, there's one here and there's one at the police station. Other than that, that budget hasn't changed. Other than, you know. Some of the software contracts, you know, they go up a little, uh. Here and there, but we've cut costs on the top end of the sheet, if you could see where that's the stuff we really can control as the department. And it's the same with the town property, you had a lot of questions about town property, town property is the same thing. Years ago, every department had their own building, well, each department who had their own building had their own facilities repair line. They had their own electric line, fuel line, and that's where it gets back to. Uh, Chief Arcary's comment about fuel, every department used to just say, okay, the fuel bill came in. Four departments use it, so we split it four ways. And they didn't even use a quarter of that, but that's how they used to do things until all this stuff got consolidated about ten years ago. And, and, you know, everything just started to come together as one. The other thing is, is just to step back to public works on the equipment. We do a lot of catch basin top replacement, we do a lot of catch basin repair, that's where we use the backhoe. And the loader, the loader we also use for snow removal, loading the trucks. So, you know, and the mini excavator we use for the smaller jobs for going into the woods because we have a flail head to clean out. All the, uh, all the water areas and all the debris that grows in there, we're allowed to, we're getting off the road to mulch that stuff up. I didn't mean to bounce around, but this is my.
No, no, I, I appreciate. I, I appreciate the answers, um, and the responses, thank you, I appreciate that.
But they also did the postage and telephones, they also combined those.
Uh, copiers, we used to leave, every department leased a copier. So.
Save a lot of money by consolidating it all together.
And control.
And control is probably the best thing.
Any other questions on I T?
Really?
Just for reporting secretary.
You had asked.
And yes, we're recording, so. And with everything we got going on. They'll probably use their whole budget this year. I think that's it. Please.
That is it. Thank you, Charles. Chief Carl.
Oh, you brought your own pointers, good, I don't get it. I don't know, it's gonna work, I got my glasses, I got my, uh, my vest. I, I, what my kids call effectively the chief sippy cup. I'm ready to go. So let's see, if you, it's probably easier if you just, I don't have to do that, it's just one of them. Any viruses? No, no viruses. That was cool. It's that, it's downloading everything off his laptop, but that's all right. While we get set up, I appreciate you guys, uh, taking time to come out here tonight. Try to make it fast, fastest smooth, smooth is fast, I know everybody wants to go home. I do think it's inappropriate to walk in, smell the delicious, uh, soft peppers cooking.
Yeah.
Um, but whoever did that, great job. Great, great job. That's all, you're just gonna click that, I just, I don't know. I don't know if my pointer's gonna work, I don't think my pointer's gonna work, so this is just gonna be a fidget when I get nervous. You have to use the, uh. I did. But, but I don't know if he's got a, you got another thing for you?
Oh, is this the, is this the thing that goes?
That's the phone, this is the U S B, you have another work?
Yeah, you have to stick the U S B in days.
I don't think it's gonna work, little flasher. Maybe fast isn't smooth.
It's smooth is fast.
Move is fast, right? Well, that, that works, but I don't know if it's gonna move the slide. Because I remember it didn't work last year for you, it's like it's trying. Saying it's got a, it's got a download something on there, I don't think it goes.
Fidget away, I'll start, I'll see you for you.
Either way, yes, all right, so that's, I don't know if you guys can see this, but I'll just go over the point and out. All right, so this is our budget for, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, presented by myself, uh, Deputy Chief. Uh, Murphy, this first time here and, uh, Chairman Leach. Next slide. And that's not gonna work.
There we go.
All right.
Would you just die of that when the chickens?
I, I think I can get through it, I think I can get through it, the jokes are gonna increase, but I think I get through it. Um, so, couple of things I wanna, just as an update for the department in the last year, you know, everybody knows I'm a new chief, um. So a couple of things I wanted to take on was community engagement, so some of the things that we're doing, we did this last year, we're gonna continue to do. Coming up is community engagement, one of the things that we're, we're, um, we're pride ourselves on is, is trying to get back to the community, so we've got some fundraiser events coming up. We participated in the Panther Plunge, um. We are doing a citizens academy starting in April, we got twenty-eight applicants for, for a maximum of thirty, so we're super excited about that, that citizens academy is a. Basically an eight week program of a real deep dive of what we do, um, and, and what it's like to be, uh, East Windsor Police Officer. Um, we will continue to do all the events, uh, we're looking forward to coming in second place for the haunted highway again this year. We're, we're, we're shooting for second place, um, so, yeah, I know, it's not still bitter, but. Anyways, um, we, uh, we have a couple of other things for community engagement, we have peer support, mental health team that we're putting together, we have a, objective that we're gonna do this year. It's a serve well be well, it's a Chiefs of Police Association structured program where if you do certain criteria. Um, you get, uh, recognized, and it's less about the award and more about the mental health of the officers and, and supporting us through the things that we, we see in the community. One of the things for that is a certain, a station dog, we're about two months away from getting a, a station dog, it's sort of, uh, if you can imagine, it's a therapy dog, it's. Uh, stays at the station, goes home with one of the handlers, um. We have three, three dogs that were in queue, two of them are labs, one of them's a poodle, I certainly hope it's not a poodle. A pretty masculine guy, and Deputy Chief prides himself on that, and we're walking around with a little poodle, but that's all right, we'll get through it, so, um. Nothing you can do about that, uh, so, community engagement is something that's, that's big, uh. You, you have, we, I believe you have to be out in the community and know, uh, who you represent and what they think about you, so. I'll stop that, I could talk all day on that, and there's some more of it, as we move on. Technology, so to the I T, um. Keith pointed out, you know, the I T budget, and so technology and leasing is changing, there's a lot of things that we go to the cloud, we've had to upgrade servers, our servers were dying over the years. Um, we have some security upgrades that we do, the police department's governed quite a bit by C G I S, it's the Criminal Justice Information Sharing System. It's, it's a division of the FBI, um, they, they do the security around our police department, they're constant, we're constantly doing audits. Like, we get audits a couple of times a month, to your point, um, for some of the things that we were doing, I, I do have an I T specialist, uh, that we pay. He's the supervisor, and he's, he's full time and then some. Um, so technology upgrades is something that we, we did this last year, we're gonna continue to do moving forward. Uh, we upgraded some equipment, so, uh, we did. Uh, update our, um, firearms to, uh, have red dots, we got rifles on board, and you know, the, these are terrible things to have to talk about, but unfortunately, everybody knows the signs of the times. We just have to have the latest and greatest equipment, so we do what we can, um, we upgraded our tasers. We just have to have the latest and greatest equipment, so we do what we can. Um, we upgraded our tasers and, and a few other things along the way. And we're gonna continue to do that in this, in this budget. And then the department restructuring. So we restructured, uh, the deputy chief and I got together. One of the things in my first year I wanted to do is a SWAT analysis. For anybody that doesn't know its strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats of your department. It basically picks apart every part of your department is what's working well and, and what's not working well, what we can improve on. And you know, most of the time you find out ninety percent of things are working well and we preserve those things that are working well. But it would be remiss on us not to change the things that need to be changed. So restructuring of the department and you'll see I put the org chart in there. Um, we want a, a chief, a deputy chief and two lieutenants on the same board. And when the org, organizational chart comes up, I'll explain to what, what we're trying to do. But we're trying to put our lieutenants, which is our command staff, um, and all our sergeants, you know, in the same place, in the same location, talking the same. Way on the same sheet of music. Uh, so a little bit of a restructuring of the department, so. Um, there is. Did I change it? Okay, I was wondering if I saved it. So this is a financial operating plan, public safety plan. Um, it's July one through uh June thirtieth. About two hours ago, that said uh June first. And I don't know why it was June first, but subconsciously I was thinking that's, that's my first year anniversary. And I only get a raise if the budget passed. So I was thinking, maybe that's why I stopped it at June first. The department was gonna exit that, exist that for that. So I'm only budget passes until we carry on. But I can assure you that these numbers will get us all the way to June thirtieth, just so you know. Um, but this is just an outline of what we're gonna do. So you can see there's important services that we do. Uh, keep mostly around the community, but crisis intervention and, and the equipment and supplies that's needed to run. The department, a modern police department, which is what's, what, what we're trying to get to. Um, so you can switch that to the next slide. Um, some of the goals and priorities, one, one of the tasks that I was getting before I made chief was a first year. Uh, plan and that first year plan I tried to stick to and I've learned a lot of lessons in the last probably eight months. And one is that, that I was, I was too, I put too much in the plan and I wasn't able to do everything I wanted to do. So this last, last one on there to present, uh, present a five year strategic plan. I'd hoped to do that in twelve months. That's probably gonna take more like eighteen. Um, so when we're getting there, but the goals um established, we're coming up into the summer, summertime. And I, I currently sort of run the, the Y S B, the youth service bureau. Um, we have an officer that we've sort of attached to um the local preventative council, which we really haven't done much with. Uh, we're, we have her training. We're working with um Amplify for, she's gonna be, it's about five years, right? And she's gonna get that up and running for us. Yeah, so. Well, our officers is gonna support that in addition to our, to our S R O and I'll talk about that moving forward. But the establishment of explore program is bringing, bringing the youth in and working with the youth. What it's like to be a police officer and all of those things that we can be positive mentors towards the youth and provide them. We don't, never know what's going on in somebody's home and sometimes the youth, if you get them in the same room, they help each other, right? So earlier today, uh Deputy Chief Stripped Bell got in workout clothes, hard to believe, but he went down to the uh, the way he looks, right? So he went down to the school and seven or eight folks.
It started with several.
Seven kids um pulled them into the weight room that were interested and, and he started teaching Ohio weight, weight training. So these are programs where, you know, we wanna hit the youth and, and basically, you know, it's a weight training program and it was wildly accepted, right?
And loved that they. Bringing their friends tomorrow.
So, um, the youth is the future. So we're, we're gonna establish a, a explorer program. Uh, we wanna continue with the departmental security upgrades. Um, we do have, I spoke about C G I S. We do have our audits, most of them in the last year, uh prior years we failed. Um, and now we're, we're passing most of our audits now and there, there are security upgrades. There's just things that we have to do. And that's why our I T guy is just, he's invaluable. He's full time uh all day long and he, he's pretty strapped out. Um, so tier three state accreditation. Uh, we did tier one and two the last several years, our tier three. Um, audit, so hopefully we achieve it. We'll be in July of this coming year, twenty four. So we're excited about that and hitting that initiative. That's a lot of policies, procedures, things that departments need to be doing. And once we hit tier three, that's the last year we would be accredited. Um, way, way ahead of a police accountability bill. Uh, complete a townwide radio project. That's um, that's been a big project for a couple of years. Uh, police department has a big chunk of that. I will be presenting more on that, hopefully if I can get on the agenda. And uh, there's a whole backstory here and I don't understand, but uh if I can get on the agenda for the board of selectmen on March seventh. There's a um, a bigger deep dive of, of that radio project, but that's something that we wanna move forward. Um, begin the department feasibility study. What, what that means is start to look at our department, some of the deficiencies we have. We have problems in our booking room. We have upgrades that we need to do, not only security, but things within that building and, and start to have that conversation. Not, not a threatening manner, not saying, oh, we're in trouble. There's all kinds of liability. We're gonna get jammed up, but have a conversation about what a, a modern police department may look like. And, and maybe have that, have a solution that we can come with in, in, in the coming years. And then my, my presentation of a five year plan, a strategic plan will have a message from the chief. Our mission, um, it'll, it'll outline our mission, our vision, our mission, our goals, objectives and strategies and how we're gonna get there for the next five years. It'll show what we've done for our SWAT analysis. It's gonna talk about financial plan for the next five years for the police department. So the citizens, it'll be available to the citizens in a book. It's pretty, it's pretty robust. The citizens could look and see where, what's, what's my police department doing? And you know, obviously fluid, you know, if you did a five year plan a year before COVID, that would change everything, right? It's a fluid thing, but basically it's, it's a document where we could be held accountable for what we're saying we're doing. Not only are we doing it, but you know, we're, we're gonna say we're gonna do, you guys and the community can hold us accountable. Left to the fishes can, can hold us accountable and we could hold our officers accountable because they could read it and say, I know exactly what we're doing. And, and what tracks we're going in. Next. So this is one of the initiatives that uh drives a little bit of the I T um budget. This is called Power Engage. And so we, this is a program through um, through one of our vendors. And so what you see right here is just a snapshot. It says thirty seven point eight percent. I'll explain it to you. So Power Engage is a program. That we've installed, that's attached to our records man, our CAD system and our records management system. And basically it, there's, there's certain categories and are too small to read. I apologize, Jason. But um, there's certain calls for service that, that we use. So we, we uh, basically you call into the dispatch and if you provide the information on the cell phone, when you hang up from there, you're gonna get a text message that says. Um, you know, so and so is en route to your call. We've got your burglary. We've got your large, we got your motor vehicle accident. We had, whatever we have is in route to your call. If for some reason they're diverted, you get a text message that says they've been diverted like to another call or some other priority. And it's a constant way to get, to get you to, to know what's, what's happening with our officers. They get there, they handle their call and sometime after that, somewhere between an hour and six hours, as long as it's not the middle of the night. You're gonna get a text message about a survey. And the surveys has four questions. We can control that. And so it's basically a feedback from the community. We are the, if the police are the community, the community is the police, we really have to know what. And those are principles that go back years and years for, for Robert Pio's principles, right? So you really have to know what your community thinks of you. So this is a, a, a invaluable tool that we're using to get feedback. Um, this can grow and I'll explain it to the, the next page, but that thirty seven point one eight shows. Um, the, the percentage of surveys coming back. And if you know anything about surveys at all, that's a pretty high percent. Um, of, of your surveys that go out. And this is just a snapshot. Initially, it was much higher. We were in the forties.
Yes.
This is just a snapshot of, I think the period of time is, is a week or so. Um, or two, but if you go to the next slide. This is our approval rating. Um, that's ninety five point nine two. Uh, that's a positive approval rating. What happens is there's four questions that come out. There's a rating on there. Anything lower than a three, I think it's a three. Um, the command staff gets an email, a tickler. It's called a task, negative task. Where we see the call, we see the comments that were made and we can assign it to somebody and that person is then contacted. Uh, in contacting that person, we can talk through some of the issues. What happened? We saw your review or you're not happy, whatever. Uh, Deputy Chief can speak about one that was just a miscommunication if you wanna just take that real quick.
Yeah, so without, you know, the, the complaint gets a, a text message as the chief mentioned, and they have an opportunity to send that ranking. If the ranking's low, you know, they have an opportunity to extract, uh, expound upon that. And often it's a miscommunication. What we found more often than not, if somebody, hey, I didn't under, I didn't get a call back on this. Uh, from the investigating officer, why was that? It might be the complaint of saying, I need you to check on my neighbor. We, we went, we checked on the neighbor. And the officer actually never even spoke with the complaint. That, that may have come into the dispatcher. Okay, thank you. And more often than not, I've gotten from folks, well, I'd like to be able to change my score or can I change that? I said, no, we're just there for the, somebody just basically wants an audience, an opportunity to speak. We have a few outliers where someone will basically just write in of something that's completely unrelated, but you know, I have a problem with a police officer. From another state, weeks get back and I don't like you guys. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, sorry to hear that, but we also, like the chief said, we still wanna hear how we're doing. And we're not gonna trivialize someone's complaint, but often than not, like the chief said, that kind of forces us to touch base with the community, say, alright, well, how can we approve upon this? And that's better for us because we're closing the circuit. So we're prompted to get that. And if we don't call them back within three days, like you're getting that. But one of the first thing, you know, when I come in the morning, that's task. I see this as long as the chief and one of our lieutenants as well. Um, my task is I'm looking at this. If I see that, I'm touching base with the chief. Absent, you know, looking at body cameras, reading a report. So again, we take that seriously. So the input from the community is gonna help us drive and do our jobs rather than this. And so invaluable tool, I think.
It is. It, it really is and we're, we're pretty excited about that. And there's some feedback that comes. Uh, with, 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 with this. And so you see that trend downward, we're trending down like point one, nine one percent. Uh, that's my fault. One of my fans called in and they'd liked me for an incident, not when I was chief, but years ago, but I love my fan. So uh, put it, put, put it a negative review on me. Um, so anyways, that's my fault. Uh, go to the next slide. So this is a slide you can take a minute and read it. The font's a little bigger. You see, you know, courtesy, respect. This is, they could put in comments about the individual officer. Sometimes they name them, sometimes they don't. This is basically a feedback Friday board. We can put up in the police department and we can get back to our officers and they could see that, right? So, um, you'll see a common theme if you read through their dispatchers, professional, courteous. Uh, another one down, very professional, very courteous, very polite. So if we have modeled behavior that we want you to, we want to be treated a certain way, this is feedback that our officers are doing that very thing. So in my career, I've stopped oh, thousands of cars. I've had over ten thousand, tens of thousands of personal contacts with the public, right? Well, for me, it's the, your usual person in the usual place. I'm a police officer for thirty years, thirty plus years, deputy chiefs is over twenty years. So I operate with people all the time and I, I can lose sight of the fact that I'm a police officer and I have effect on somebody when I go up to them, right? So I can guarantee that most people in this room have ever been stopped, go raise your hand. But if you've been stopped, you remember, you may not remember the time and date or what happened, whatever. But you remember how that officer treated you. It stays with you. Well, we treat, we try to make sure that we treat everybody positive. This is the feedback to our dispatchers and our officers that they are doing the right thing because they're being told that they're professional, that they're polite. And when you put it up on the board and you tell them, they love the feedback. And that's why this is just completely uh valuable tool. We learned today, we did a follow-up today with the vendor. We learned today that we can actually put Q R codes on the back of their. Their um. You put it on the back of your business cards, they can scan it, go right to the server and they can do that. We can hang static ones throughout the community. We can hang out, you know, Walmart or we have the national night out. We can put a thing by our booth. And anybody who wants to say positive and everything, negative things about us, they can click it up there. Going on. So we, 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 um, yeah, we, we probably wouldn't hang it out of a, one of our local bars right after we've rated it with the liquidation. So we probably wouldn't do that. So, but the thing is, is we wanna know what's happening with the, with the community. Um, and this is a, this is a tool that is, has driven up a little bit of our, of our I T.
I believe that officers like this too.
They do, they do. Initially, we, 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 we've been having about three, four months now and one of the feedback we had is uh implemented. And so the only ones in the state of Connecticut that are doing this right now, Rocky Hill started, but they abandoned it. Hartford was doing it. Windsor's doing it, we're doing it and South Windsor's in the process of getting it together. And that's basically it. Um, the officers do like it. We thought that they would look at it like Big Brother's watches, you know, what's going on here and this and that, but just like the body cameras. There was some resistance and the body cameras are invaluable now. They're so, they're, they're actually so popular now that the, the section of the people that wanted the body cameras, believing that there was gonna be a narrative of all this abuse. Are now trying to restrict the use of our body cameras in certain scenarios so they can change the narrative back. We love the body cameras and this is something the officers love too. So, next slide. Uh, that being said, uh staffing levels, I wanted to show the last year, you can see there's twenty six officers. There's ten um full-time administrators and there's three part timers. Moving forward in this budget, I try, I'm trying to adjust that to twenty seven. Officers are full-time, uh, full-time administrators stayed at the same, at ten, and the part timers dropped to two. Uh, one of our part timers uh was our mental health technician and our clinician, she has left us and gone to full-time state employment. Hard to keep the mental health team at a part-time status. Um, one of the other things is. The model moving forward for us, we're just not seeing the numbers. Mental health is definitely out there and it's something that we have to be uh responsive to. But our officers are, are all getting trained in critical intervention training, C I P. The full-time officer I'm looking to do is a community service officer. Uh, same thing with the, the local preventative council, somebody that could be attached to the Y S B, the, the youth service bureau, somebody that could be attached to our J R V. And pick up the tasks that our full-time officers are doing. Um, in our agency, there's not one of our officers unless they're on probation that doesn't have multiple hats. And they're doing multiple things. Uh, Sergeant Lee, who's done the accreditation, has so many things on his plate. That, you know, he's constantly coming to us and I think I'm doing a bad job. I'm concerned about not being out there for all the people. The guy's amazing, you know, uh, the detectives, the things that they do with the evidence room. We can make a community service office, much like South Windsor's, although they're, they're basically um, uh, non sworn. We can, we can shift that into that officer's position and, and pull away from that. And I'll talk a little bit more when we finally get into the uh, into the chart. So if you can go to the next slide. Um, this organizational chart is, is the new chart of what we're looking to do in the future. You can see the chief and the deputy chief and admin assistant. You have the two um lieutenants on the same um playing field. So right now existing, we have an administrative lieutenant whose job description. Has thirty committed the agency and has oversight of everything under that. So the two lieutenants really aren't the same. What we're doing through labor management meetings uh with the union is changing that job description, putting the two lieutenants both under one job description. But interchangeable between patrol and admin. On the admin side has all the I T supervisor and the six dispatchers. The record supervisor, records clerk and the two part-time A C Os, although currently we only have one. Um, there's a detective, detective, it's detective narcotics, our second detective, our S R O and our community service officer. That C S O is a community service officer that I'm looking to uh take the part-time salary that we had about thirty nine thousand and change. Adding about thirty one thousand and putting at the base level of an officer about seventy thousand. So it's not the full cost of an officer, but it does, uh, does add somebody, a little bit money to the budget. And then obviously you have your, your patrol uh sergeants and um, and the corporals.
Uh, that's C S O, that, that's a, a sworn officer.
That's a sworn officer. There's an opportunity for it to drop down to um an A C O position, still an A C O slash community service officer. It's less money. Um, you know, uh, I'm confident we, you know, we can kind of suit the fit, but you know, hopefully it stays in there. Um, has that.
So besides the fact that that, this, the, the social services person that was part-time was not a sworn officer. They, they were part-time, they were not a sworn officer. The fact that they weren't a sworn officer, that limit their ability to be in some of the situations. You know, like right on the frontline at a call.
It, it does, it does, it, it, there's a hot scene. So it's the same thing as a medic, you know, can you stage, can you do that? She was fantastic with us and the, the incidents that she did and took over, she was, she was really fantastic. What we're finding is, um, the services that she can provide after the fact are, are very, it's very limited because she's part-time and she does work for the town. We're seeing calls of service that people are in crisis. We can either handle them at the C I T level, which is our officers being trained and recognizing what's going on. Uh, and then referring to community health resources, which is what we did before. We have a referral process. Uh, I wanna reestablish uh, uh communications with them and an agreement with them. That we would refer things to community health resources on, that are beyond the officers. Um, and then what Brittany was doing is she was reaching out quality life issues, solving some issues that, but there were things that our officers could do. Now, what she would get can at least sort of identify. We, we have a population here, although we're fortunate, it's not large, that their issues are so great that it's beyond even a, a, a part-time clinician. And at that point, they're referred to community health resources or, or the hospital. We have uh mechanisms to ship people to the hospital. So in that sweet spot, we were just saying that there, it really wasn't an effective tool. So when I looked at that department, went through that SWAT analysis, we were not seeing anywhere near. Um, that she was very effective and I wanna be very clear, she was very effective. We were not seeing her utilized worth of part-time. And even if this was cut from the budget, I would not argue that, that working for another part-time is, is, is our response. I, our response moving forward under me is that our officers are all um crisis intervention trained. Um, and that we have a, a partnership and a referral program through community health resources. Two-on-one emergency response teams and, and we, we lose no, East Windsor does not lose. Uh, a benefit as far as helping its citizens, in my opinion.
Do you currently have five or six sergeants? I thought there were six.
No, it's five.
Has it always been five?
Uh, yeah, well, we went down, but yeah, uh, it all, it has always been, well, we had six sergeants at one point. Uh, I was a six, the detective, detective sergeant, nobody's ever been able to replace me, but we're going to try and move forward, so. Um, we'll see, we'll see if we can get back to six, but. But if you, if you want to move to the next chart. Uh, new handouts and updates, I, I believe, we didn't change the budget, so I added a slide in there just in case something got changed and I was going to hand. That off you folks, but I think you got the numbers. So now, what everybody's been waiting for, and I think I've been taking a while, I think it goes right to the budget. So. If you guys can't read it, so this is just the top part is our personnel and the bottom is our expenses. So if you look at our clerical salary, uh, you can see an increase of about a little over one percent, two thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. And that's just the salary increases. They, they're one of the, one of the bargaining units that is under contract. So there's an increase there. The officers line, um, you'll see an increase of twenty-two thousand one hundred. Uh, and eighty, a couple, couple things to note there, that's one percent, but. Uh, we have, our officers are, are not out of contract, but the last, this is the last year and they go into the third year of their contract and negotiations in June. Opens up in June for the last um, salary increase. So I, it's not included in this budget, but. Between that salary line, that, that's likely to go up um, after we settle that third-year contract. And, and I can explain more to that if there's any questions. Dispatcher's line, again, that dispatcher increase is that we, we're going to have dispatchers that are contractually um, going through steps. So uh, we have four dispatchers in our bowl. They're out of contract, they're going to go into contract negotiations as well, so that's, their raises are not reflective of this budget. But that number is reflective of the ones that are not at full um, step, the step increases. Um, you'll see the admin night, so this ad, that admin line um, is the. Two hundred seventy-three thousand and change. That's the combined salary for the deputy chief and I to run the department. You'll see um. That's, we're paid for our potential, so because of that, they decreased it by twelve thousand dollars. So um, the good news is, is we're not paid for our humor because you could never afford us to. So that went down. The part-time salary, you can see thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's where I, I took that money. Reallocated it to the officers line. Added about thirty-one thousand to make it the seventy thousand and change for the starting, starting salary of a new officer that would, would go to the academy. Um, P D overtime. Is uh, this is a tricky one. So you see it decrease seventeen thousand dollars. That the average, years ago, the average of the P D overtime was three hundred fifty-four thousand and change. But every year in the last several years, and Amy could speak far more to this, we busted that. But we busted that because. We have not been full staff. And this last year, when I took over, we were down about five vacancies and then with. Um, F M L A injuries and people on F T O, it was up to nine at one point. So you have more. Overtime incurred, obviously, when you have shift minimums and contractual days off that they get. When you're, when you don't have staffing. So, but the flip side of that is that the salary line is not being used. So. I, I don't really have, one of the things when I took over and I'm still doing and I'm breaking down and I'm, and frankly, trying to get a good grip on. Is what is driving overtime costs. So go back to that SWOT analysis. I look at this and I want to see what's driving the overtime costs. And it's hard to do when you have so many vacancies because. If you look at it, the top things that are driving it are leave time, and it's the contractual vacation, contractual sick, contractual things like that are leave time. But that's because we're always on minimum staffing because we don't have the staff. So one person takes the day off, you can't deny him because. Contract allows them to have some leave time, it creates the overtime. So it's driving that overtime way up. Um, and I can explain more of that. If there's any questions. Training salary went up twenty-three thousand dollars. That's entirely um, or under, it's an emergency management thing. We have a team that we're working on. We're, we're trying to do every year tabletop exercise, every other year, a large mass exercise on what. Uh, maybe an active shooter or an incident at the school or the industrial park or things like that would happen. It's preparedness, right? This is all about preparedness. Uh, it's the training salary of the officers working. It reflects what we want, what we think we can do this next year to add to that training. And unfortunately, we live in a world that just, you have to be prepared for these incidents to happen. So that's, that's what's driving that sixty-two percent increase. And then you see the longevity, we, we kept flat. With all that being said. Last year's budget to this one, it is the adjusted budget, is down fourteen thousand dollars or minus uh, point three seven percent. That's on the professional side, or the personnel side. Second part of that, operations, you have uh, professional services, that's being driven up six thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Majority of that is um. The warranty that we have in there, Idemia, we have two printing systems by the state of Connecticut. They have to be warranted. There's nothing you can do about it. It's our APIS system and it's about forty-six hundred dollars. For that, that got added to that, that for the last several years was being paid out of our asset forfeiture, asset forfeiture funds or funds that are seized from. Uh, drug cases that we do, the D E A or state, federal, whatever. Um, and it was being paid out of that, and, and, and that's not proper. Um, that gets audited, it, it, it didn't. You know, there was some issues, it were really pretty restricted of what we can pay for out of that, and that was, wasn't the right um, cost. So that went up, and then there's some other professional services. Um, that drive that um, cost, which is um. The Idemia is what I talked about, some water for the police department, so we, we get our water that uh, we now um, have come in with water service. Uh, you see that the dog fund is pretty, is flat. Vehicle maintenance, we look at vehicle maintenance and my fleet manager that does a fantastic job, um, Corporal Tugent. He. He struggles with this. He, you know, we, we talked about going up or down. We haven't busted this in the last several years, but I will tell you. Our fleet is getting older. We have C I P money to buy cars. It's not about the money, it's about the availability of the cars. We're on a waiting list like three hundred to get uh, just two cars. Nobody can get the cars that we need. It's a complicated system. If you go to Ford, four change your models, we can't move our equipment over, so you have to buy all new equipment. That's a cost of twenty thousand dollars or plus extra. If you stay with the Tahos, they're going to keep their models same. We're trying to get the Tahos, there, there's the rainbows, but any, any decision you make has a potential for. Needing a new cage that doesn't fit from the other cars. It's a pretty complicated system, but he's doing, he's working miracles. We are on a waiting list and I'm hoping that this year we get the two Tahos. Um, and, and so I think, I think we're going to be okay with the vehicle maintenance.
You say this year, do you mean the current fiscal year or the coming fiscal year? Don't know yet.
For, no, so this, this current fiscal year, I have money in C I P. I have not spent any of it. I'm trying to get a car for this year. Next year, I'm asking for two additional cars and I've had the increased cost of that. What I'm trying to do is the two thousand twenty-three models are ten to twelve thousand dollars less than the ones moving forward. So we're trying to get the cost of the warrants. That are, that are less. So you know how the C I P system works, you ask for it in September. Sometimes the state bids are not out yet. You, you may get the money or you get the money in July or it's allocated whenever. And then that you're already into the next year's costs, you can't get that year's model and the next year's model is ten thousand dollars more. And it's just a system where you're already behind. Uh, because you don't know what to ask for, for the next year by the time money becomes available. But we may get work. I'm not, that, it's not private, maybe. Um, yeah, anyway, so travels flat, supplies, um, six hundred sixteen dollars. Um, you know, e- everything's going up, you know, we squeaked a few things in there. Uh, but that's, that's pretty, pretty flat. Um, some of the things that were driving the supplies were um. Uh, let's see, were recruitment, which we, we were eating, but you know, some of the systems like uh, Adobe. Some of our Adobe uh, professional licenses, snag it and register dot com for, for our website. Um, are some of the supplies. Equipment, uh, equipment that. Three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, it's still in there and that's our SWAT, that's replace some of our SWAT equipment for our SWAT officer. Moving forward, next year is about four thousand. We have some work we have to do on our cruisers. Our cruiser, um. Uh, basically um, storage containers in the back of the Tahos. They're busted up, either existing, non-existing, but they're certainly not working. We're, we're finding problems with, you know, extinguishers going off. Um, you know, by getting hit, uh, some of our expenses for modems, uh, items for shifting and breaking into our modems, so we've moved those up. Some of the cars leaked, it got into the mod, so we're, we're, we're working that back through. So there's some equipment costs there. Uniforms. Uniforms are going up. What's really driving the uniform costs in, increase everything else, but. When you have uh, the starting, the starting cost for officers, we talked about the vacancies, um, the starting. Cost to outfit a, um, I gotta take my glasses off, I need my other glasses to read, but um. Is. About seven thousand dollars. So outfit an officer about seven thousand dollars. We have three vacancies, well. I'll talk about that. We have some vacancies. That we're going to have to outfit. So if we're looking for outfitting officers, we can't absorb. You know, three officers at seven thousand dollars in there, so we have to ask for some money. Um, so some of that is the increased cost of, of, of about two officers being outfitted in their uniforms. Dues and fees the same, anybody goes to the academy, it used to be free, now it's four thousand dollars. It's four thousand dollars to send them through the Britain post, anywhere you go, it's four thousand dollars. If we have to train these officers. You know, we could maybe absorb one officer, but if you're looking at replacing three, that's twelve thousand dollars. We don't have twelve thousand dollars in the budget, we have to ask for an increase. So some of that's there.
So for two, to fill two vacancies, you have money in the budget to, for two, in uniforms and in the dues line.
Yeah, so we feel, so we're trying to absorb some of the costs of that moving forward. So our police commission, if you go all the way back up to the salary line, the salary line. Might change at twenty-two thousand one eighteen. In addition to changing for contractual raise in June. Our police commission took action last night and, and potentially they offered three people. Um, jobs, conditional offers, that conditional offer is, is an offer of employment as long as they finish out. Uh, the backgrounds. We lose a lot of people to backgrounds. So we don't know if this is, all three are going to survive. Two of them are already certified officers with, with um, experience. If they survive the process and get through the contract, the collective bargaining agreement has language in the contract that. They, they can start at a higher rate. So rather than starting at that flat seventy thousand dollars, first officer going to the academy. They can start at the step below the years of service they have. So that, that number, and I, I didn't change this now, and I don't know what it's going to look like in the future. But I may have to come back and, and ask the board selection to look at that number and ask for an increase. Obviously, you guys would have to approve it and move it forward, but that could increase as much as thirty thousand dollars more. Um, based on their years of service. Uh, one's coming out of Springfield, one's coming out of New Britain. Um, and we offered a, a conditional offer to a kid that would have to go to um, to the academy. So we're pretty excited about that, but obviously I can tell you that background investigations reveal some um, some. Uh, flaws and uh, and they don't always survive. So that number may increase. Now, if you drop that all the way down and we have to outfit these folks, you're looking at this cost. Outfitting somebody that has to go to the police academy is more expensive because they have academy uniforms. That they're not allowed to wear from patrol uniforms. So you're basically duplicating. They have academy uniform to wear in the academy. Then when they graduate, you got to buy them all patrol uniforms. The vest in the carrier alone right now is thirteen fifty. Um, so when you look at buying a vocal group vest in a carrier, it's thirteen hundred fifty. You got the outfit of all of that. In the academy, they have P T gear or workout gear. It's about, I think, uh, the last time we paid it, uh, the workout gear was um. Got a uniform. Uh, nine, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. So it's a lot of money to send them to the academy. But if you don't send them to the academy, they get higher wages. So it's one of those things that, that go back and forth. So with that being said, when you get to the bottom, it's thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, increase a little over thirty-two thousand fourteen percent. Um, overall budget sits at um, zero point four-five percent. Um, and I think the next side, slide is the. Questions?
Questions or comments for the chief? Or the deputy?
I, I just want to say thank you because I've seen a. Huge difference in the morale in the department and the community engagement and um, and thank you for your presentation.
I just have some feedback. My nine-year-old daughter came home to, granddaughter, granddaughter, granddaughter. Came home today, was so grabbed, she graduated there. So excited about it. Came right out of the bus and told you, so.
Yeah, we had their graduation. Uh, Officer Valencia does a great job. She's um. Late-term pregnancy, uh, we're holding on to her, tried to hold on to her to March first. She was in the office a week ago having a contraction. I said, no, you got to order, you got to hold on, you got to give someone. She followed that order, graduated there. Um, looking forward to posting that to the community, but. So we have uh, we have uh, uh, feedback from that. So a couple of weeks ago, we had some of our officers and our um. Our sergeant uh, have experience with that. So none of them were working that time, but. I know I'm a chief, so I can just delegate it to somebody else.
Chief, any comments?
Um, yeah, I just want to say thank you, chief and deputy chief, and thank you to the police commission and, and thank you for your staff. Um, for a very thorough, um, comprehensive budget presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
One of the, uh, I'll just take a second and share a quick story at your expense, of course. Um, so one of the things I've, I've done every year since I've been in office and it's, it's like one of the highlights of um. The holiday season for, for my son and I is we take a tour of uh, the police department and the fire departments and the public works department and. Um, I check in, you know, and facilities and what's going on and all that, but, but he gets to see, you know, everything, my four-year-old gets to see everything that's going on. Well, this time, um, Deputy Chief Murphy had him playing with the lights in the cruiser and had him decked out in SWAT gear. The helmet and the battering ram and all that. Chief Carl, with his extensive background investigations, had a, a fingerprint kit set up on the conference room table and was teaching Elliot how to. Peel his own fingerprints off of a, a mug from the chief's office. And he also had brought a box of munchkins. Um, and Elliot said, oh, chief, can I, you know, are, what are those for? Can I have one? He goes, well, yes. You can have one if it's okay with your dad. So I said, sure. And while Chief Carl was explaining how you actually dusted her fingerprints and lifted off. All Elliot could keep asking was, what's your favorite kind of munchkin?
Yeah, I know. He could care, well, he could care less, but he did walk away with his own fingerprint.
Yes.
Uh, and he, and he got a mini badge. He got.
Wears that to school.
We swore him in and he got a big badge, so. Well, that's. Yes, that learned my lesson there. Munchkin, I got to hide. That was awesome. Yeah, communications. Um, communication budget. Uh, two items, pretty simple. Radio system. You'll see the increased change of the radio system. Last year, it was twenty-two thousand one forty-five. This year's cost thirty thousand four twenty-five. Two factors. One, very minor increase from our Marcus, which is our vendor. They went up the first time in three years. I think it was. It went from fifteen-nine to four. Fifteen thousand nine hundred of sixteen thousand eighty-one eighty or something. It was very nominal. The bigger cost is that. Our radio system is failing. We have, it's things on life support. Uh, crashed twice this weekend. Uh, Bill Freeman had to go in one of the times, uh, ten-thirty at night and breathe life back into it. Uh, we are on a borrowed system. It, uh, it's six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, to keep that system going. It's a P twenty-five true public safety system. Our fire department and ambulances are on the old L P R, not to get into particulars, but. If, if you happen to be there on March seventh, going to have a good time. Um. But that's, that's the driving cost of that increase is that radio system is that we're paying rent on a borrowed system, six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, until we can get our own radio system built and move forward. The second driving cost is, um, you see the fourteen, uh, uh, forty-five hundred dollars. That's gone to twenty-six, six oh two. Great discussion around this. Uh, the, the driving costs is, so our dispatch center takes nine-one-ones for the, for the P S F center for the state of, for our area. We take the nine-one-ones. If it's medically driven, it goes out, or fire department, it goes out to T N, Talon County. Talon County dispatch does what's called E uh, M D. You're required to, if it's a medical, the dispatcher is required to stay online and to give medical. Advice to the person that's happening, they can't break that communication. So there's a cost to E M D. That forty-five hundred dollars is the cost to E M D. Uh, this twenty-six thousand dollars is. T N has changed their model in some form. That there's been an increase that not only do they charge for the E M D, they're also charging per call. In the, in the several years in the past, what was happening is their number was reflective, the both of the fire departments, Broadbrook Fire. And Warehouse Point Fire was bearing the brunt of that cost. This year, they were able to break it out per cost and that is the um, our ambulance. Cost of dispatching, not only the E M D, but dispatching our ambulance. Per call for East Windsor calls only. And so there was some back and forth going with T N. I think it's been mentioned before and Jason can speak more to this from the board of selectmen on agreements and things like that, but this is um. I guess to use a term, correcting the fire department's bearing the brunt of the cost of the T N dispatch. Um, so that increase is twenty-two thousand one oh two. Um, for a total increase of the budget, or actually, it, it uh, increases the budget, what, thirty thousand dollars, right? Um. Is anything you want to add to that, uh, Jason, from the conversations?
Um, it is going to continue to change as they shift away from the per capita model. Um, it is gonna continue to change as they shift away from the per capita model onto the per-call model. And that represents our EMD costs and uh ambulance dispatch elements. There's no fire costs that are, they, the two departments pay that separately.
Right, so you said that, so I'm just. Right, and so doing our due diligence, you know, we looked at what are some of the models? So are there other cheaper folks that can do the EMD? We, you can find um other ones like CMed. The issue is, is that now you're bifurcating your emergency services. So now, no calls are simply just, very rarely are they just police. Sometimes they're police and ambulance, they're ambulance, fire, sometimes they're all three. But you don't want three different dispatch systems, you don't want the police being dispatched by the police department, the uh fire department being dispatched by TN. And you don't want CMed dispatching the ambulance. Um, that, that's a recipe for disaster because no dispatch center knows what, what's going on. Our dispatch center doesn't, it's not that we can't do the EMD, we don't have the personnel. So to bring that, in my opinion, to do the EMD and dispatch fire and ambulance, there's a lot of factors that have to be met. We have to, I hire more people. The other thing is that the fire department, um, they're, they're not here to represent, but I can speak for them. There's things that TN does that, that, that have in place the ability to tone, um, the communications that go back and forth. That our, our police department doesn't have that equipment, so I can't even give you the cost of what that's doing. Well, moving forward, it is going up and there ha, I think there probably needs to be a greater conversation about agreements. And how this is all gonna, gonna, gonna happen moving forward. But it's not, you know, I don't want anyone thinking that we didn't try every avenue we possibly could to bring this down and see what this was gonna look like. But we can't abandon TN um, without adding personnel to my dispatch center and, and unknown equipment. And then, of course, there's a level of service fire department amelices is getting where they, they might not get if, if our dispatchers had to dispatch that as well. Um, so, but I just wanted everybody to know that the homework was done on this.
TN is, is, is Tony Knox boxes, right? And they're also patching the CMed.
Right, they're.
As part of that.
They're, they're, they're doing a lot of things and, and our, and the dispatch center can get very, very difficult um to do and without multiple people. So uh Windsor does this, but they have two people on. We can't always say we have two people, two dispatchers on, they have way more dispatchers. Um, so they dispatch a lot of this, but they will patch over to TN. It's TN's business, Talon County's business is fire and ambulance, that's what they do, they're, they're very good at it, they have backup systems. And so, um, you know, there's an increased cost. But, you know, I think the board of selectmen's aware of this and, and moving forward, we, we have to have a. Um, yeah, I think a, a conversation about what the boundaries of that will look like moving forward. Um, so, but this year's, this year's bill is that, is that, is that amount? So I, I put it in communications. And the next slide is. The question?
Um, or him, um, originally I'm, have three guys, it's sixty-seven thousand, six forty-seven. Are we sure that the figures we're using now or what's actually gonna be charged to us?
Yeah, the sixty-seven thousand is the townwide cost inclusive of both fires.
So you just the fire departments up?
The fire departments actually got a report from Talon County Dispatch.
Yeah.
For the calls for which they were dispatched. Um, and they, they also removed the duplicative call where they were both dispatched to the same call. So to try and get that picture on a per-call basis of apples to apples, the same. Um, and I'm gonna get this wrong, but it was something like Broadbrook had thirteen hundred calls. Uh, Warehouse Point had like seven fifty, I think I'm in the ballpark there.
Yeah, I, I have, I have a report for anybody that want to look at it, yes. Uh, but I didn't wanna get into those details tonight, yeah.
And I don't need the exact number, but I understand what you're saying because they took that additional money.
Yes, yeah, Broadbrook's got twenty-six in there, but it too.
But the uh, for selectmen, Bowser's right, next year, the cost is gonna increase. And at what point do you look at this and say, we, we have to figure something out?
So that sixty-seven thousand townwide is going to a hundred thousand next year.
Yeah.
Right, they basically did one-third per capita and two-thirds call this year, next year it's only call calls. So that call cost is much more expensive than the per capita was.
So does this cover the ambulance association too?
It is only.
That's the only, and the twenty-six is not all of this.
It's ambulance and EMD, EMD costs about four thousand. The, the bulk of the twenty-six thousand is the, the per-call cost to dispatch East Windsor ambulance to East Windsor calls. When East Windsor ambulance responds to a town other than East Windsor, we're not getting billed with it. It's not clear to me if, who is getting billed when TN dispatches uh East Windsor ambulance to a town outside of town's category. Yeah, they're so, you know, I met with TN staff up there, they do a great job, I, I can't speak enough for them, they really do a great job. And this is the model for it, they're the experts in business, if you don't know about that. But, you know, they've got costs and they've got things that they gotta do and it's uncertain how they get to where they get to. I met with them, I met with our fire departments and talked to uh Chief Clutch. But, you know, if you look at that twenty-two thousand dollars, and I can tell you that, um, and, and I'm not standing there because I'm part of the public safety team. But the ambulance service that East Windsor gets for what Tommy Clutch does is far exceeds twenty-two thousand dollars. You could not contract, and if you did, you're gonna get a contract company that's gonna come in here and say, well, I could do it for zero, I could do it for this. You're gonna get one ambulance and your response times are gonna be longer and they're gonna be out of the area and it's just not gonna be what you want. If you had to pay for the service, it would far exceed twenty-two thousand. But I'm mindful to the taxpayers and the fact that you just can't have a blue, a, a, a budget ballooning every single year. I don't know what the solution is, uh, I, I wish I did, but I think it's gotta be worked on with the company here.
But some, you were wrong, seven or eight years ago, in a different position, but didn't they look at Windsor, Bloomfield and a couple others? Were looking at forming some type of a collaborative effort in having a dispatch.
Yes, yeah, so, yes, absolutely.
Is that gone by the white side?
Well, a couple of things, um, you're absolutely right. The state of Connecticut came out and said, if you have PSAP centers that do fire crews and ambulance, they'll support them heavily. I don't know what the figures were of the money. Um, and so Windsor just built a new PD, thirty-nine million dollar PD. Uh, their dispatch center is built for regional, they're not currently doing regional, but they can do regional dispatching in there. The issue becomes, you know, towns and I don't know why it is, and I'm not gonna say it's politics or whatever. But we, we can't even regionalize an ACO program, we can't regionalize garbage, we can't regionalize anything. You know, that, that county government, which I think we're going, the state of Connecticut's gonna have to go to. Um, to your point, PSAP centers, Windsor Locks, um, East Windsor, uh, Granby and uh Southfield all have similar. They all have PSAP centers, they're all be, they all staff with, with full-time dispatchers, they're all being supported by the state of Connecticut. And their calls for service collectively wouldn't add up to Edfield. And so, but everybody's got their own little fight thumbs and it's difficult to bring those things together. The other thing is downline is that, um, you're seeing some of it, some of the PDs out uh west, Win- Winchester and actually Volca. They went to Litchfield County Dispatch, so we're in a TN, um, and the dispatchers aren't trained in dispatching police. And the CAD systems aren't the same. So what's happening is, is, you know, you're, you have to have a dispatch center that has multiple different CAD systems. And then what dispatcher's trained on this and that. Now, fortunate enough, Windsor does have Next Gen, which we use. Um, but, you know, I think it's coming, um, but it's gonna have to be more forced than asked.
More steak, less carrot.
Correct, yeah, so we, we have a model in policing that uh we go uh. Ask Telma, I think we're probably have to go to Make. But yeah, I mean, uh, it, it, it's, it's worth the discussion, uh, but that's, that's it.
Any other questions on communications? Keith?
I'm fine, thank you.
Emergency management, um, my last one. So emergency management, you got the top line personnel, again, that's Stifin, the Stifin used to be twenty-three thousand five hundred, its request is thirteen thousand. So uh Deputy Chief and I, I'm the director, he was named Deputy Director, you guys did that a, a couple of minutes ago. Um, again, we paid for our potential, so we reduced it by ten thousand five hundred dollars. Um, again, if you're lucky, taxpayers are good, cuz like I said, if you had to pay for our humor, you'd never be able to afford us. So, um, that's been, that's been adjusted, so, um, the humor? No. But I will tell you, uh, we're glad to do it. Uh, I got a letter from our Region Three Director that our local emergency operation plant uh has been accepted. So we're eligible for the grant back here today, five thousand dollars, five hundred and six hundred dollars, whatever, it was accepted, first time since two thousand and fourteen. That we've even submitted it. Um, there are some areas of concern that we have to increase, I can tell you, um, we have to have an evacuation plan, we have to have a dam plan. We have to have a localized uh s- uh cybersecurity plan. Uh, but we're gonna work on those for the next year and the next one's due in two years, every two years. So we're, we're, and we're gonna build the SERC team, uh, which uh we can talk about later, but that's basically a volunteer team. It's gonna come out and help us with the disasters, uh Deputy Chief is taking a lead on that. Uh, we're already in a process, we're gonna apply for that, that's funded by the state, um, I think that's March fourth.
Uh, yes, sir, we gotta go get authorized from the state, uh, to we actually be recognized as SERC. And that actually makes us eligible for state funding on that, uh, some grants immediately as well.
Yeah, so we'll do some training, it's about twenty hours and it'll have a SERC team. So we're, we're, we're doing, we're doing some good work and the emergency management team is folding in all of our public service. And uh, basically, everybody in town, including Public Works and the RAC Department. So, um, moving on, uh, phone, that's uh, the, the phone cost is uh increased. It's um, you know, we pay for a phone line that goes into the EOC and um some other, some other costs with the phone. Communications, uh, that, that laid flat. Um, the equipment line went up four thousand dollars. Uh, and, and working with Public Works and specifically Joe, I think that we have to. Joe thought, and I agree entirely, that we have to spend more time maintaining our generators and doing some maintenance work with that. Putting them under a load when they're tested, uh, which is recommended by the contractor that we use, uh, Power Energy.
Um, generator.
Our generator, um, and so, you know, I support the four thousand dollar increase. I think that's what we have to do, we have to be responsible moving forward to keep these things maintained. And then you got your supply line. Uh, with all of that, um, the budget goes down six thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Thank you.
Questions or comments for the chief or for the deputy? I'm sorry, the director or the deputy director? Keith?
No, thank you, I'm all set.
And that's it, okay.
Get my thumb dress back and.
And the only other one we haven't done yet is police commission.
Yes, police commission's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, if you need me to approach the assistant recording secretary, so.
Statist, right?
Yes. Any questions for Bob? Uh, public participation, um, is, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board of selectmen? I'll first ask, tell me if there's anybody here in the room and then I'll turn by the same opportunity, anybody who's in the cell line. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board? Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Um, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Move that we adjourn at eight fourteen PM.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned unanimously at eight fifteen PM.